And then I was able to get the grant and matching funds, they contributed, I think, 25,000. But now I think they're okay with doing the half of, you know, the matching funds to complete 50%. And even so now, I think they just want to build a playground, you know, not even the grant may take too long. So it's, it's kind of, it is something where I think council members almost kind of whip up votes for things they're passionate about. And I think a good council realizes that when they do a project, they have to make, you have to make sure that, you know, this is something that one council member is passionate about in this project. You know, that's something that should be included or, you know, you have to really consider it. Should that be included because that council member may not hold for it? Or there's just, there's a way to find, way to make, um, when you make the sausages, including the elements that council members want to see.
Hmm.
I think when the council's harmonious, I think it makes the manager's job a lot easier because then he or she knows where, where, um, priorities are and where they, you know, what makes it easier to go through all the steps. The process is important always, and I would say, but then finding out, I think, well, how, with the look of the community, I think I've hearing that, I've always have read that maintaining that small town charm, I think that's an important thing that council wants to see. Just from reading about it. So I think any, any project we do, we want to make sure it doesn't affect that. I understand that those things can change too. And I think a good manager, mayor, councilperson has a feel for that. And then we all got on the same page about how we'd like to move forward.
Hmm.
In kind of an abstract way, but I think that's, that's kind of, it, it happens slowly over time, but I think it's just funny to look back and see this is the same council approved, wouldn't approve that, but now. And then shifts happen, but it's a slower moving.
Let's hope. Thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, in any of your roles, have you ever had to redirect, you, you mentioned the importance of process? Have you ever had to redirect the operations of a team or unit to ensure that they were following proper procedures and protocols? And if so, how did you navigate that change and resolve any subsequent conflict?
So I would say that there's been times where, you know, a lot of focus is maybe made on, their own communications are focused more on programs rather than a website or something. We'll have meetings, real lines, things like that. But yeah, there, there's definitely times like that. That would be an example.
Okay. Happy to turn it over to Zach right now or someone else?
Yeah. Donna, we're going to try and get, see if you want to ask a question. Can you unmute yourself, please? Probably in the lower left part of your screen.
Did that do it? Am, am I unmuted now?
No.
Okay, okay. Um, one of the expectations of the people in this community is that, um, management would be visible in the community, which means that's a lot of attendance at a lot of events. And there are other ways, of course, to make yourself known, but how do you feel about that? How would you, how would you, I guess, maybe is a better way to say it.
Councilman, I think you're, you asked how I would be visible at certain events. Is that, there's a lot of feedback. I think it's very important that the, the manager is visible in the community. And I think that participating, being at an event to see kind of where issues are arising. Is that, is that the question I'm? So I think it's, it is important to be visible and to be accessible to the community and, and it is important to see what's going on. Boots on the ground to see what's actually happening. So when something goes wrong, I think, you know, and things can happen, but I think it's important that, to make sure it doesn't happen again. If something is a problem at an event. But being accessible is very important. And I would say that, um, you know, when I go around in my current community and people come up and, and I'll hear about, you know, a pothole or something like that, and I make sure to, to report it. And I think it's just another conduit to make sure we're getting information about what needs to be done in the community.
Thank you.
Donna, can you hear us?
I can hear you now. Yes, I heard just the tale.
We, we can hear you.
Pardon me?
Or at least I cannot hear you. Donna, we're going to try, La's going to try calling you so you can just have her on speakerphone.
Okay.
So when you're, if you're going to answer your phone, please.
Here it is.
Okay. Please ask any questions. Yep.
I missed a lot of what you said. I'll rephrase a different question. Go ahead.
All right. Now I'll just mute my cell phone until we're ready to get down. But John, stay on the phone. Or shall we call Paul? How long will we?
Yeah. While we're doing that, I'll, I'll throw.
Doing that all, all.
If you're selected for this position, what would a successful first year look like for you? I think a successful first year would be, so I think if council wants to see the, you know, the fire station bonded, I think we work towards that. I think if the city hall, if it becomes a city hall, I think we get renovations done and turn this into a functional city hall. I think, um, just being able to take some steps forward with some of the things councils wanted to do, I think that would be, we can look back a year from now and say, we, we did that. And this is functional building. It's secure. And, and it's a benefit to the community to, to meet here as a council and, and manager. I think that would be, that would be a great success. And then also getting kept up for extra days next year. Those would be a couple of things. Milestones, but I think in the meantime to kind of keeping with your benchmarks and your budget. You know, you want to see weekly emails to council about updates, adding those in, I think, and I getting the process down to with communication that council would like to see. If council is happy with that, and then in addition with some of these other items, if we can get a council set, I think that would be a good first.
Hey folks on the, on the phones, want to jump back in?
I have called Paulie right now.
Okay. Well, I'll keep going. Um, so I, I will say council is generally harmonious, um, at the personal level and for non-controversial topics. However, the fire station you mentioned a year, it's been a very long time since we've known we've had to do something. Um, so how would you facilitate council making decisions? And, and obviously the idea would be for us to do it ourselves, but we haven't been able to cross that finish line. So the staff number is, if you were selected for this position, how would you help facilitate that?
I think I'd want to talk with individual council people, maybe smaller groups, just to see what the obstacles have been. And then just kind of if we can work through some of those. Yeah, without knowing kind of what the major obstacles, I'd like to identify those and see if we can work through some of those, some of those issues. It's, it sounds like the location's fine, or I, I mean, I shouldn't assume that. Um, I'd like to see what kind of, what the problems are, see if we can work through them in some other way. If there's some wiggle room on some items, that's kind of, you know, going to go from there.
Well, my, my joke is that if we wait long enough, we'll have Roomba-style fire trucks that'll just drive around, um, and drive themselves to the station. Um, so one, one of the challenges with the fire station is that it's a highly technical thing. And for my background in architecture and urban planning, there are things that are very difficult to understand unless you're knee-deep in them. And then it's oftentimes difficult to explain it. Like, I would want Andre Agassi to teach me how to play tennis because he knows it at such a level that the elementary things I wouldn't know. Um, how would you work to communicate with staff and citizens highly technical issues? Um, and could you give an example of how to do that?
Question, I think, I think it's important to, when you're dealing with a highly technical issue, for example, wastewater station, I think it's important to have experts involved. And then I do think it's, then you take that information, and they always say like with, when you're dealing with council presentation to the public, and so you can, a good manager will be able to distinctly state something at a, a fifth grade level. But be able to, that's kind of, it is bridging that, kind of that technical, um, issue down to kind of a, to a level where anyone can understand. And I think that can be done. So we did a lot of, um, for, so the wastewater station, but I also did a, an energy efficiency grant with, um, I'm sorry, energy efficiency project with Johnson Controls on our city buildings. And that was the way it was funded through a tax, it's on lease program. Um, you have to be able, it pays for itself through energy improvements. So I have to show now where we're, you know, basically there's calculations about, you know, light bulbs, the power jaded LEDs, where that cost for a person's time. Of course, a year that's allocated to us. So just kind of showing those different elements of where this, where we're getting savings. It's not just when we, when we do a roof, we're getting that new installation with the better value, installation value, but we're also not having as many repairs. So I'd say that was kind of a more, you know, it was very, it wasn't just the, you know, we have the roof, we had, we had lights. We also had HVAC systems. We also worked with our, our Civic Arena, the ice chiller. Um, we had to replace kind of the brine with, we had, there was salt water going through it and put propylene glycol in the system, but that was deteriorating the pipes. So we had to, by changing that out, we're, we're, we're going to have to replace the floor at a later date. So there were a lot of elements to where we get benefits of not having bigger costs in the future as well as energy savings. So it was a complicated project, but just kind of being able to identify simply just, I think, having a big, when you're doing a presentation like that, and just kind of say, you know, you know, you, you talk about the gas, electric saves, and then you talk about those issues at, you know, at the arena where we're going to have bigger costs if you don't, uh, you don't do something now. I get an expert involved with the fire station and then I talk about what issues we need to address. And whether it's kind of, they do, you know, they will hook up onto the fire truck so that when it leaves the station, no matter whether it's exhaust going into the station, that detaches when they leave. So I think there's certain elements you have to have in the fire stations that it's safer for the fire hitters.
Um, I'm going to ask a slightly different question now. And the framing is a bit peculiar, but let's say, um, if you were to get hit by a bus tomorrow and you could have one thing that you've done on your, on your headstone, what would you want to have on there? What are you most excited about?
Well, that's a good, that's a good question. I think, I think when I, when I come into this field, it seems like there's been a lot of facilities that the, that the cities own that were heated upgrades. And I'll just give a, I would say probably improving the buildings over at, in Pla Rors. And when I first arrived there, they had keypads at every doorway there where everyone knew the access code. And so for the last 15 years, any employee who ever worked there, they knew access codes. So first thing I said, we need to replace those. I think just, there's a lot of value in, that cities have with these buildings and they've aged. And I think that they're financially stressed for so long that, um, it was a time when in my career, when I could come in and fix those items up. And I was, I've been proud of that. It was worn in at same place.
All right. I'm, I'm good. I will step back for others.
Sean Paul, let you guys know that he doesn't need to speak. He's happy to let other council members speak.
Paul, can we carry that over for council meetings too? Okay, Jamie, anything to follow up? If not, I can ask a couple of things.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Philip, can you still hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
You doing okay?
Yeah, I'm doing well. Thanks.
Oh, thank you. I think you're doing just fine. Um, so tell us something that makes you uncomfortable. Either, either at work or personally, just something about either makes you, makes, what, what would make you uncomfortable?
So I, I think like most people, when, you know, we have a disgruntled employee that bad that they did, took it over time in a weekend, and they'll start, um, you know, they get mad and start yelling. I have to remind them it's a professional work environment and we don't do that. So there's, there's certain, I mean, that's probably, you know, conflict is a big part of the job, but I think we all professionals. So, but, but that's one.
Okay. So, so when, when you see something that's uncomfortable and you see it occurring, what, what, what steps do you take? How, how do, what goes through your mind? Talk about the timeframe or whatever.
Something like that. I think, um, discipline and things like that. I think taking a step back and I think about what I'd like to, what I'd like to see in the future, how I'd like to see this play out in the future. Um, adding clarity about what's expected, I think is important. And I think, I think I kind of take a step back, think about that and have a meeting with, with a person in that situation. So in general, when, I think when I'm uncomfortable, I like to think about why and then about, was it something that I personally, you know, I have to improve on, or is it something that I can improve the situation? Or is something that needs to be, um, like, so the expectations differently for employee.
So, so, so let me, let me play off of that. So let, let's say that you were over at our public works. I think you might have gotten a tour of that building maybe, or did they?
I think it was, well, that was closed.
Was it closed? Okay. All right. Well, let's say you're over there and you observe a disgruntled employee during some interaction. You're part of, maybe there's five or five of you in the room. You, you observe something about the employee. Would you handle that directly or would you allow the supervisor of that person to handle that? And how would you?
I think.
How would you put yourself, take me through your thought process on, on?
So if it's, if it's something where, yeah, I think I would probably, I would probably mention something to the employee at the time, but I would then talk to the supervisor, his or her supervisor about it. And I think it should be, I think it's better handled by that supervisor. And then I can, I can work with supervisor on what, what their plan is for it, to address it. Um, but I think, I think depending on what the issue is, right? I mean, but I think if I see something egregious, I think it's, I, I have to let council know when I think I'd be next step. But if it's, if it's something just that can be corrected, that's not egregious, that, um, it's just kind of a little, something like that, working for the supervisor is the better way in general.
Okay. So you, if I use the phrase direct report, you understand what that means?
Right.
Somebody that direct, reports directly to you, in your current role, how many people report directly to you?
So interesting thing about IRL, I do work with all the department heads, but I would say director reports, probably, I think, building maintenance, IT staff. And then I work with kind of the department heads where I think some, you know, it kind of shows in the organization, sorry, goes through the assistant city manager, it's probably more, I work with the department heads rather than, um, to, to deal with it, you, what their staff.
So, so obviously we're, we're thinking about this building that you're in today.
Hmm.
Um, we haven't had to take care of a building, well, we have our public works building and our wastewater facilities. Um, when you, when you deal with your maintenance staff, do they, um, you, you do that weekly? Do you do that bi-weekly? Do you, I, I, do you do performance reviews for those people?
Yeah. So we have a trainee and part of when they go into that, that role, they have performance reviews. It was, I think it's 30, 45. It was 30, 60, 90. And then we do, we, I do weekly meetings with my, my bully maintenance staff. I set up a, a workflow management system where question come on to all, over the city about issues to be addressed. Now can I have that, that sheet sent to them weekly? And then we'll kind of meet to go over priorities for the next week. And same with our IT staff. I have them, I have a work order management system for them to see kind of what items are taken in, what we need to work with our contractor on. And that's a, that's a weekly meeting as well.
Gotcha. Which, which work order management system do you use?
Uh, it's called Q Alert.
Q Alert, okay. I saw that down under, well, it's under your neighborhood services thing. So you brought that from Warren then?
Right. I did have that. We did do that in Warren. And then I think with COVID, it made a lot of sense for a system that, you know, the residents could interact through, there's an app on your phone. And so we're kind of thinking about different ways that, you know, we could receive issues. We wouldn't have to. And then I could have the iPad deployed with a water department, say there's a, and it can go right to the workers and they can close it out as opposed to coming in, getting a sheet of paper. Um, so it was, it was implemented for COVID. And because I was familiar with the system in Warren, it was something I could quickly implement. It was, it still took a lot of time, but I was able to implement it. With our COVID phones too.
Okay. Have you had a chance, we're in the middle of our budget session, have you had a chance to look at our draft?
I did. I saw what, what Justin put. I did watch a little, watched the, uh, some of the session, I, on the work. You think you call it a study session, but advisor, you had two, two meetings of those. So I did see that. And it looks like you're looking at different options for this building making. I didn't see that.
Any observations about something we're doing or how we're organized or?
I think, um, I think, I think it makes sense to budget conservatively. That's what we do as well. At my current job, I think with, with what happened last year, we put a lot of the capital items in their contingency budget, just to, I think we may not have the funds to do this because we really didn't know how this can play out of it. And, you know, I think it's worked out better than anyone thought it could have, knocking wood so far, but it's, it was an odd year last year. And I think, um, I think you're doing the right thing by budgeting conservatively this year. Um, and we do the same things where, you know, we look at the past two years of the budget and kind of see where we're at. And then we always kind of adjust our capital items. You know, we have a five-year capital for each department. And we kind of see, as things do, jump up to the front. And that's why you have to revisit them every year. And I think, yeah, but I think it, it seemed like a familiar budget discussion when I was watching.
So you've been involved, or have you, have you been involved in, um, putting together the budget for St. Clair Shores or, or certain parts of it or components?
So we have, we have a budget team, which is the finance director, the controller, myself and the city manager. We sit down with each department. Our parks and rec departments, very large, but they'll bring in kind of a staff member for, you know, for example, wool or, you know, civic, sort of arena or golf course. But we'll have various staff come in to basically defend their budget. And then kind of come up with a, at the end of the day, we kind of sit and go through open items. We probably need a couple more times. It's a, it is a process from, basically from, you know, January, February until approval where we're, we're looking at things. We had, this year it was, we're, we're implementing Unis online, which is our, our budgetary software. So that's been, I think before, we're using, they had this very large spreadsheet, which we had to go, it was tiny. And, um, so that's been kind of an adjustment, but the process has been the same where we be, and a lot of meetings, and then it gets presented to council and, and council is, you know, the issues that they'd like to be addressed.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, great. Yeah, jump back to you.
So in my experience, joining a new organization or, you know, the government, I guess, is an exciting time, I think. Especially when, you know, somebody's coming sort of from an external position or role, they bring a fresh set of eyes. And it seems to me, and again, kind of in my experience, there's sort of a, a window of time where somebody can maybe be a change agent, if I can use that phrase. But then the longer somebody is in a place, maybe the more they become blinded to something that maybe they noticed when they first came on. We've been in a number of different places. I guess I'm kind of curious if, if you've also had that experience where you've come into a new place and, you know, your eyes have popped at a couple of different things. Have you, you know, but at the same time, you know, you're trying to observe and acclimate. Can you talk about, uh, whether you've been successful in, in making changes based on some of those initial first impressions? Uh, things that worked or didn't work, uh, and how you might, if, if you were chosen for this position, what sort of approach you might take? If you, you know, you came to the position and if there were some things that, um, you know, made lights go off in your head, or, you know, how would you kind of reconcile that and, you know, acclimating and moving forward and, and making changes? Can you talk about that a bit?
I, I definitely think that is true. And a fresh set of eyes. And then I think that's, whenever someone comes to a new organization, I think that's something you, you do gain is, uh, I, but I do think at the same time, it's, it's something that needs to fit correctly to where, um, it doesn't need to be a process of listening. It can't just be, it can't come across as imposing something, but I can say what that renovation with the building, renovation I discussed earlier, I can tell you that there was trouble. There was some bushback, plus there, it seems like there's, there's, there are turf issues sometimes and all certain things. And, and growth is hard, I think in general. It's not necessarily a fun thing for, but I think that part of it is kind of like change is, is something that happens, but then I think at the end of it, I think everyone knows, so, so, it can be hard, but I think it's worth it. But I don't think it has to be done for the right reasons. And I think it has to kind of make sense. And I think when, when it comes in, it has to be kind of listening. And I think we'll be talking to council about some observations and what, does this make sense? And then kind of moving forward based on, you know, based on the feeling of it. And some decent way a little bit too, if it's something that, you know, an observation and then there's some support, but maybe it's not the right time. I think something that, I do think you gain a lot of, you gain a lot from a fresh set of eyes. And I, I think in terms of implementing, I think it's, that's where you have to figure it out together as a, as an organization.
Hmm. Thank you.
Donna, you have your hand up? Okay, we're going to unmute, unmute La's phone here. Uh, we're going to call you back. Hold on one second, Donna. Is there more communication we have news today? That's a question.
Mail.
Okay, you're, you're locked there, yeah?
Yep.
Okay. Um, most of us have things about a job that we really like and some things that we don't like so much. Um, what are two things that you most enjoy about your current job?
Thank you. Uh, I really enjoy the variety. I would say that's kind of, that's kind of the nice, that's a nice thing about this job is that no two days are the same. And, and I will say that I do like, and as you say, I've done a lot of grand work. I, I do feel like I like deadlines. I like, you know, I think it kind of pushes you to get things done. So I think that kind of work, when you can do a project where, um, you see the end result, I think that's, that's something that, I think that's very satisfying. When I, I think that skate park project, but to be able to, I think a council member who really liked to, passed away right before I started and they were able to, were able to do that, created, and they have a plaque for that council member there. I felt like it was just a very satisfying experience to, to see a project through the community liked, but, yeah, I would say, um, I do enjoy, I do enjoy project work.
Thank you.
Anything else, Donna?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Hang it up.
So you, you, you mentioned, you mentioned that you'd. So you you mentioned, you mentioned that you you like to do pursue grants. And you're familiar with the grant process. Talk to us a little bit about some of the the different types of grants that you've helped pursue as it relates to whatever, buildings or parks or wherever.
One nice, when City Warren, I I for a tap grant, a transportation alternatives grant to extend the, it was the Iron Belt Trail, but they had a they had a extension from Belle Isle, Hunter Creek, and then just kind of stuck at that point. I brought it up, Van, we brought it up, Van, I had to do a non-motorized transportation plan and it was a seven-lane highway. So we lanes on the side. It wasn't without a little bit of controversy, but that was one that I think in already developed community, there really wasn't a lot of place. And we looked at this ITC corridor and that wasn't, they weren't allowing be allowed, it was not allowing that to happen. So we were able to make that connection. I worked on quite a few, it's a city of St. Clair Shores, three see three land and water conservation fund grants over the last five years, which implemented a new I put in place of Parks and Rec Master Plan. And the one thing I really, I'm happy that we did this plan. And then I think we've implemented most of the, you know, I'm really trying to reach it. The things to apply for at this point, which is a good thing. We have two public parks, which I really, you know, we have I remember on rise and I kind of improved as much as I can at those at this point, which is which is great. And so I think those two and then I received some other energy efficiency grants to put in induction lighting and a and I also was in a parking lot. And then I also assisted with the assistance of firefighter grant. They received the city of St. Clair Shores received a Quint four. I was not the lead on that one, but I assisted with it. So and then there's some other, but those are probably the main themes of the ones I've worked on.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. Well, what haven't we asked you that? What haven't we asked you that you would like us to know about yourself? Whether it's family, hobbies, desires, fashions, whatever, things you don't like?
So I'm married. I have a dog. So I've been running with my dog in the morning now because he has way too much energy for my life. And I like playing golf, not very good at it. League and then I used to play basketball a little more for just fun, but my knees are not as great as they used to be. But no, I really like the, and I like to bike too, which is something I really like trails here. It's, that's just a beautiful area. Hiking, biking is kind of more what I do now. And this I wanted to share.
Gotcha. Is it, was there anything on the job description? Bill, that bothered you or that you didn't like or that you had a question for us about?
It sounds like you guys use BSNA, which we had in Warren, but I haven't used that in a very long time. I used to be part of the against budget for the senior healthcare commission and that, which, oh, it's something I would have to, I'm sure I similar to other budgets. I haven't used that a lot.
Okay, so there'd be some familiarity there. Anything else you noted?
I think that's because of the, I guess, what was the question again? I'm sorry.
Just was there anything on the job description that you saw that you had a question about or, you know, that?
No, I think that was it.
Okay. So you think you could be a good city manager for us?
I think I could. And I'm looking forward to the opportunity of being honored.
I appreciate you putting up with our little challenge here of getting started. It's always hard to go first. Are there any other council members that have other questions?
Just, I want I'd see if student rep Gilbert has any questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for asking.
And then is there anything you would like to ask us? I know we we posed that last time, but you get more folks here. I think I would like to ask the members I didn't talk to last time, just what what do you see the priority of the city manager in this coming year? And I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm still, like I mentioned, I'm still finding my way around city government. I've not been in nearly as long as you or many of the others in the room. I'm looking for, you know, someone to help us to stick to our city charter. Just reminders of it. I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of information coming to council members at every meeting and there's a lot of stuff to sort of keep in your mind at every given time. And I think sometimes key documents, the city charter, the master plan, capital governance plan, these guiding documents. They're maybe hard to keep track of. And so I think when I'm at a meeting, I kind of look to, you know, either senior members or the city manager. And, you know, I've seen that happen at times. Our community development manager will say, as you recall in our master plan in State X, as you recall in the charter at State X. So I would really appreciate that. A city manager is somebody who knows our, you know, these guiding documents in and out. You know, I think that responsibility is also on individual council members too. But I I would look to a city manager to be very familiar with the documents and to be sure to remind council of them at different times. So for me, I come up from, you know, importance of process and procedure and things like that. But from a project standpoint, I, you know, I would really like to see us make progress on a starter station question. As I appreciated Zach's questions to that effect. And, you know, I like to respond about well, stepping back and figuring out what what are the obstacles? I would appreciate help helping, help with moving that forward. Again, ideally, it's something that council is able to work out. But to the extent that the city manager can be a support in that role, I think would be really valuable, whether it's you know, I think one thing we talked about at a prior meeting is coming up with a document, you know, kind of these summary documents of what are all they should be talking about in the past? Bringing people up to speed, but doing it in a way that it doesn't go on and on for pages, but has all the key information. Things like that. So so I would appreciate help with that and and sort of fidelity to our guiding documents is what I would be looking for primarily in this, for sure, in the next year and then beyond.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm
Just, I think just your priorities and what you'd like to see the city manager focus on or qualities you're looking for in the next city man?
Um, well, I think this sort of came up in my question to you. You know, we are a very like close community. So I'd say I'm looking for somebody who wants to be a part of that, of that community culture and be involved in all the things that we do together here. And, you know, I feel similar to what Jamie said too. We need somebody who can facilitate the flow of information as needed between staff and council and do that effectively and clearly so that we as council have the information that we need to make the decisions that are best for the city. And I guess that's about it. I don't, but I can.
Donna, we're going to give you a chance to answer that question as well, Bill, what what you're looking for, city manager, please.
I think perhaps the most important would be for you to establish relationships with your staff. I think that's really important that that need plays. I also think it's important that you define how you're going to deal with work with this council. And I think that you should have a fair amount of input that and then work together.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Bill, anything more for us?
I'm just like, I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I think my perspective on from bigger cities is extra growth. Help with kind of, you know, with that when we need a restructure. And I know succession planning was kind of something too, but I'm looking forward to the challenges and I thank you for your time.
Do you want to talk a little bit? Do you have ideas on succession planning? That you want to share?
I think the, a couple of, this time, I probably want to talk to the staff a little more, but.
Okay. Fair enough. That's a, that's a good start, I would say. Well, thank you for your time today. Again, apologies for the technical, logical disruptions early on, but we got through it, I think.
That's, that's what happens during COVID. I figured you had these. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. So we will, we will take a fifteen-minute break. Our second candidate, Justin, is supposed to be here around two thirty. It's two eighteen. If everybody needs to use the restroom or whatever, well, this Zoom link will stay active and we'll try to get started around two thirty if we can.
Just hit me down now.
I don't want to go anywhere.
Um, it's not too much of a trouble. Okay, thank you so much. Yeah. Oh, no, it's totally bad. I know what you're supposed to do.
Oh, okay. That's a small world.
Yeah, I got it. Do like lots of local fish.
In Lily and in the, all the worst areas and yeah, he's got it.
Well, call him, I said, I
I sure will.
Small world. And I have their character, I mean, I think we're there, I mean.
I didn't read that. I thought that was, that was all I wanted.
I'm probably older.
Graduated two thousand and five.
Yeah, I heard it.
Ninety-eight, so. That's funny because I did ask, I wonder if you
The best first job I've ever had. I was so much fun. Yeah. Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Sarah, is that your wife?
Thank you.
Yes, yes, you absolutely are.
This is the first time I put on like actual clothing in a long time. And however you want, where you want to put it.
Okay, well, wherever it's going to be. It's up there.
Like angle it this way so you can still see.
Sure, that's perfect.
And then you can kind of go on the end. I have, we've got some good chairs here. This one's better.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Okay, thank you so much.
And I believe that the thermostat is, well, what did he say? So cold.
It is.
He offered to turn it up, and we were like, no, no, we're fine. Because at the time, you know, went around and
Right. This weather is getting so crazy. Heading this morning is around forty, going up to eighty.
I was crying on the set actually. I'm going to set up a seventy. It's me in here first.
I know, it's been so cold. But if you ever gave me a walk around, I've never been.
We got, well, you haven't watched.
No, I haven't.
So this is the
Right, okay. This is what I should not.
Oh. It's more like this is the door. And upstairs, so this, the problem is that Your snacks are in the door.
I can take care of it.
Would you? Thanks. I just wanted to dial another people.
Is it okay if I can get your storage?
So yeah, so this is obviously how the cradle this will be.
I was expecting it to be a little wider, but
Yeah.
It's totally different seeing it from the plans than in person because I was looking at the branch having the desk here. Or that the desk, though. The big desk is like really straight. And that makes a lot of sense. So. I know, because there's the door right there. We usually have since you're such a little
The other, one option, take down this wall. So this wall will be taken out and put so that this one
Oh, it needs to end it out. And then if you're all the way back there, you're
Oh. Pretty easy.
It's true.
Hey there, Donna, how you doing? You're on mute.
Did that do it?
Yep, that did it.
Good, good. I, as you can tell, I'm a Zoom expert.
You are.
Yeah, and I, yeah, in such a short period of time as well.
It's a steep learning curve.
I can't, you know, it actually doesn't always look the same to me. Like I kind of mastered something and then I get down here and I've forgotten what button I pushed and so on. But it certainly has served us well through COVID. So
Sure.
Yeah, yeah. But I I had to go am I shouting? Because I can hear myself. Am I shouting? Because I can hear myself.
No, no.
Okay, I had to go to a meeting for senior center board and uh, yeah, and I got. So it said. I stayed outside the door because they didn't see outside. Those kinds of things. I said, well, and.
That's welcome.
I should call them, but you know, I'm hunkered down and this is the thing where you was at that kind of. I hope that we.
I can see Donna moving.
More flexible as we go along.
See Joe moving? I'm sorry.
I don't think you can hear me, but hey, Joe, hey, Donna.
No, you're not on.
No, okay.
It seems a little cool to leave. The podium on and one other one on. But Donna, are you getting Donna Paul feedback, yes or no?
I'm sorry. Marie, did you say something?
So we'd have to call, we'll have to call Donna to get her, for whatever reason. Um, Paul's mentioned that he is going to be bouncing in and out of this today because he needs to go see Pat. So I, I don't see him on at the current time, at least in my gallery view. So that's, that's why. He was here for part of the first time, but he, he called me this morning and um, said he would be in and out, so.
Well, it's another, it seems to have gone fine the first time with just leaving the podium on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hello, Donna. Hello, Joe.
Hi.
Bonjour.
Hi, Justin. How you doing?
Everybody ready? Justin, are you ready?
I'm, I'm ready. Fire away.
Okay, well, welcome.
Thank you.
So it's 2:30, uh, interview number two for the City of Dexter City Manager, um, search here. Justin, if you could, as, as we explained at the last, um, first interview, that the goal here is to allow the members of council that didn't get a chance to interview you the first time, to ask some questions, okay? But as a basis of, of background, and we all know you, so this is a little bit different, but why don't you just introduce yourself, starting with your level of education, um, however far back you want to start with that.
Sure.
Uh, your experience, obviously, um, some of it will be familiar to us, but just tell us about yourself. Get acquainted, get comfortable speaking a little bit here and.
All right.
But, but explain how you feel, all of that sets you up well for the role that you're trying to achieve with the city manager.
Sure. Um, so uh, I guess I'll start from the very beginning. Uh, I, I was born and raised in southeast Michigan. I uh, started my college career with Open University in political science and, and history as a double major. Um, coming out of that, I wasn't quite sure what I wanted to do. I thought I wanted to go to law school, but uh, that wasn't in the cards. And I opted for a master of public administration degree instead, uh, which I also did at Oakland University. During my MPA, I had the opportunity to meet for city manager of Troy, who offered me a, an internship in the city manager's office. And so I actually did a volunteer internship with Troy for about six months before getting hired part-time, um, which ended up being kind of more of a part-time permanent position with still the title of intern. But the city of Troy at the time was going through a lot of cutbacks. Um, this was 2012-ish time period. Um, and so the city was going through a lot of changes and I had the opportunity to, to explore and kind of work in, in various departments. Planning, engineering, getting into the DPW, we have RYO, sewer. Obviously working in the city manager's office and community affairs departments. Getting experience in the clerk's office. And so after, after some time kind of, kind of working my way through, through all of the departments, um, I uh, I had the opportunity to kind of make a, a transfer over to the library as the assistant to the library director and help with capital improvement projects at the library, um, along with some grant management, um, work over at the library. Um, and so I had the opportunity to work there for, for about a year, um, before applying for and getting hired here at the city of Dexter. Which I did in, in January of 2015 as the assistant to the city manager. And, you know, for the last six and a half years, um, I've had the opportunity to progress through my career, um, becoming the city clerk. I'm taking on, um, ever increasing responsibilities, um, in addition to, you know, elections and, and clerk functions. Working as the, the, as the vice recreation commission, the earth's culture heritage committee, um, working directly with city council, um, working on, on a variety of, of projects, grants. Installation of, of new parks and trails. Um, and uh, I think that, that that experience, particularly the last six and a half years with the city, um, I've had the opportunity to, um, build relationships, get, get a feel and, and understanding for the processes that, that the city has in place. And, and, and also build relationships with, with staff and, um, and have their, their trust and, um, able to, to work well.
So you've been, thank you for, thank you for the background. So in, in the, in the recent history of this council, since the election, you've essentially been working as the interim city manager.
Correct.
What has been, what has been the most difficult part of that for you?
Sure. Um, to, to be perfectly honest, it's, it's time. It's, it's, it's time to be able to, to do all of the things that the city manager is responsible. You know, in, in the last six months, yeah, I think at one of the last meetings we talked, we've had 17 meetings. And then the last four months, and with those 17 meetings comes packets, um, comes to-do items coming out of those, those meetings. But, but then on top of that, you know, learning the responsibilities that I wasn't directly in charge of while I was, while I was the assistant to the city clerk. Um, you know, just something as simple as dental reimbursements. You know, that's, that's something that I, I, I hadn't done before that, you know, I took on. And that's, that's a small example, but um, you know, managing the upcoming roads projects. While I did work closely with, with the former city manager on, on a variety of, of things related to roads projects, I was not the, the point person for, for roads project. So, so I would say definitely the, the, while, while I've, I've done my best to make it as smooth a transition as possible from the former city manager into where we are now, um, it's, it's definitely come at a cost of time.
So with that, and, and I, I, I think we can all see that it's been a busy six months. I mean, with, with this process and the, the building evaluation, other things, goal setting. Appreciate that effort. What, uh, looking forward, if, if you were to become the city manager, what would you be looking for in terms of the staff around you? Now, we've talked a little bit about the succession planning. I'm talking more about it relates to either you or your assistant, maybe some of the skills you'd be looking for in an assistant. What do you, what do you, what do you see that you need that would complement what you have?
Totally. Um, so I would say some of the things that, that I think would, would complement me are some, some, some IT background. So I, I, I do, I'm not an IT professional, but I do, I do tinker. But ha- having somebody who, who can kind of fill that gap. So right now, a lot of the staff are coming to, to myself and Mike for IT needs, um, just, you know, simple stuff as my computer. Um, so being able to have another person in the office that people can go to, to be able to ask those questions. Um, I would say somebody who, who has some background in maybe roads planning, um, streets, um, utilities planning. I think that, that would be, be a nice compliment to the skills that, that I bring. Somebody who also has, has an interest and enthusiasm for some of the more quality of life aspects, so parks recreation, earth culture and heritage, and then also elections, um, interest. Um, someone that, that I can help, um, train in, in, in those areas and help kind of pass on some of the, the responsibilities that I've brought into the city manager position that, um, by handing those off would allow me to, to take on and, and continue working on those areas that, that I, I, I still need to build, um, as the city manager.
So talk a little bit about those areas that you, that you, you want to learn more about, that you want to build, that you, you know you're touching. Share that with us.
Sure. Um, so, um, I, I, you know, I've, I've mentioned for roads, um, and, and roads planning. But, you know, we, for example, on the upcoming agenda, we have an item for Dexter Crossing. Coming into this year, we, we had plans for, to, to, to do third broad, um, right over here. And um, because of, of issues that we've had working with MDOT, that, that project is not going to be able to, to be done this year. So, you know, we're, we're looking to transition into, uh, being able to do a, a different project this year. And I, I've, I've been talking and working with our engineers at, at OHM, Emma and Dan Kerr, to develop, um, a, kind of a, um, a more formal process for how we go into a project, um, and, and, and plan for the different aspects of those projects. So whether it's, it's CPO or whether it is the community engagement pieces, um, the, the different reviews that have to be done. And, and, and part of that is because, you know, I would like to have a sense for, for kind of what we were proposing to council to do as far as, you know, like community engagement. But also for, for my benefit of, these are the aspects that are going to go into this project. Um, and, and, you know, for my benefit, knowing, you know, here's, here's the type of project that we're doing in Europe and aspects of, of that project. Uh, another one that I would say is, um, so I, I do have a, a Michigan State University Extension Certificate in, um, uh, planning and zoning. But I, I'm not a planning and zoning official by profession. And so I, you know, I've, I've worked with, with Michelle and I've worked with Parks and Rec in, in planning project and planning parks projects and doing park survey after planning, but there is another, another level that I, I feel that I can take, you know, that hours of education to, um, with regard to, to getting deeper into the zoning ordinance and, and the master plan and, and those processes. You know, and then Michelle has been, has been the, the point person and thing coordinator for the zoning ordinance update and before that, the, the master planning process. And those are things that, that I, I would like to, to take a more, more fuller role in and, um, become more familiar with.
So Justin, uh, what, uh, just switching gears a little bit. What has been your experience in, uh, any type of hiring process?
Sure. Um, so I, I've actually been the point person for quite a bit of hiring that we, that we've done. So, um, in my time, uh, we've hired, um, three DPW employees, um, one or two wastewater employees. We've hired a number of part-timers. Um, and, um, I, I have been the, one of the, if not the point person, um, in the, uh, interview process, the development of the job ads and the release of those job ads and advertising those. The onboarding, um, getting them to, to fill out paperwork, um, and, uh, starting their, their training and working with, with the different departments to, to kind of make those introductions and, and get them started on and, uh, their, their way to, to getting working.
Gotcha, gotcha. So the follow-up to that, um, a couple of follow-up to that, so on your team, I know, I mean, I know all the people that are on your team. Who do you consider to have established a manager direct report relationship with so far? And how is that?
You, you, you mean as far as, as the, the folks that directly report to the city manager?
Correct.
Um, so I mean, I, I've, I've built great relationships with, with all of the employees, um, but specifically, um, with, with Marie, um, with Michelle and Brenda and Erin in our office. Um, so you have the, this, um, public superintendent, uh, public, public work superintendent. The treasurer, finance director, community development manager, um, and then the administrative assistant and utility billing clerk. Um, I would consider all, all direct reports. Um, and then, uh, the, um, public works foreman and the folks at the DPW, um, report correctly to Dan and, uh, the public utility superintendent. And then, uh, the folks at the water and wastewater plant and also.
Very good.
And then my reports to Michelle.
Great. And can you share your role in, uh, union negotiations or participating in any of the, those types of activities?
Absolutely. Um, so, so most recently, um, you know, we, we just had a, um, union negotiation and, and, um, union contract, um, process completed in 2019, I think it was. Uh, I think it was, was about a year and a half ago, um, and then three years prior to that. And I was, um, part of the negotiation team in, in the last two contracts, um, which involved, uh, meeting with, with the union representatives, um, meeting with, with the, uh, union point person and the employees who represent the other employees on behalf of the union. Meeting with them, um, hearing their, their list of, of wants, um, coming to the table with, with our list of wants. And then working through the, the back and forth that is, is the negotiation process. And the, the analysis and the, the analysis and kind of. What, what, what do their wants mean to us? And what do our wants mean to them?
Very good. Um, I'd like to see if there's other council members that would like to ask some questions. Uh, I can keep going, but maybe Laura or Jamie, would you like to jump in?
Sure, I have some questions.
Okay. Yeah, you're welcome.
So you've been, uh, hello. You've been sort of in this position, you know, this interim position for a while now. And, you know, coming up to speed on a number of things and keeping other balls in the air at the same time. What would you see happening in the, you know, next six months in terms of you know, continuing that transition? Uh, would you foresee making any changes based on what you've learned? I mean, have you been trying to just maintain the status quo, keep things moving and maybe the next six months you'd try to implement different things or would it be still more of the same, but you have health? Can you say a little bit?
Yeah, so, so I, I would say, um, you know, it, it has been the case where the last six months have been for trying to keep things moving and, and, and kind of keep, keep the walls rolling back that we, that we had prior to the former city manager leaving. Um, and make that as, as seamless as possible. For the next six months, you know, obviously, part of number one would be getting, um, my replacement on board. And starting the, the handoff of, of duties. But also kind of taking, taking a step back and looking at where we are. And I, I, I could see and, you know, as much as we've, we've had 17 meetings in the last four months. Having, having kind of more targeted meetings, so meetings, so for example, um, you know, we, we have, you know, kind of going back to streets, um, we have, uh, third abroad, we have Dexter Crossing and, um, we have potentially the second street, um, water main and side water project links. But what does, what do the next three years look like as far as roads go? And, you know, road, roads is one example of, of, you know, the, the different activities that we do, but kind of taking, taking a step back, bringing, bringing together the, the streets committee for council and looking at planning for what, what, what are the next years look like? I know that, um, you know, John Puswell has, has discussed its, its goals and objectives and, and it's just, you know, we've had a number of whole sessions on a variety of different topics. But I think, I think one thing that, that I would like to do in the next six, six months is. one thing that that I would like to do in the next six six months is kind of honing that. Um, and really looking at what are what are councils priorities for the next year, two years? Um, you know, we're we're going through the budget process now. Um, but we do a two-year budget. So, you know, what 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 are we looking at next year? What 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 projects and and what priorities does this council want to to accomplish? Um, that are more than or different than than what we're doing now.
So we talked, um, you know, this fire station issue, um, has been around for a long time, predates me, predates you. What role, if any, do you think you can play in facilitating, um, council's conversations of that, staff conversations of that? What, how might we continue to move that forward or be able to, you know, come to a decision? Is that something you see as council needs to resolve? Is there a role that you might play in that?
Sure. So, um, I I I definitely think that it's 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 been a topic for a long time. Um, but I think over the last two, three years, um, we've we've been working to gather as much information as 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 we can as as the city and as a group. Um, and, I mean, ultimately, it's when we come to council to to make a decision. Um, and it would be my role as the city manager to be able to provide you the infor- the information that that you're looking for to be able to make. Um, you know, whether whether it's it's, you know, one option, a second option, or or something that that nobody expected. You know, I I don't think a year ago, anybody would have expected that we would be sitting here in twenty five fifteen, um, as a potential location for for city offices. And yet here we are. Um, so, you know, and maybe maybe there's something that that we haven't seen that is a possibility. Um, if if council is is, you know, gung ho on on one option, then we as staff are going to pursue that option with with all possible vigor and 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 support. Um, but if if there's there's concern or, um, a a desire to have more analysis, more information, then we we will bring that to the table and get that for you as quickly as we can.
I have just one more question, um, for now. So, as you know, we have a council manager form of government, um, and as you know, I'm new to this in my role here. So I've been doing some training, which is municipally, um, and, uh, you know, per our city charter, it says that the city manager shall be the chief administrative officer of the city. And according to the M M L, in this form of government, individual members of council and the mayor do not have the right to direct staff to perform any function or activity. Individual members of council and the mayor should not be interfering with the day-to-day operations of the city. Rather, the decision of a majority of councils necessary to provide direction to administration. I guess you could talk about in the past and moving forward both, uh, how have you, how will you create healthy boundaries to ensure that you're following the direction of the council as a body, as opposed to the direction or wishes of any single council member?
Sure. So, um, you know, the the city manager is is responsible for the day-to-day administration of of the city and and its, um, its functions. Um, the council is is there to to provide policy-guided policy directives, um, and, uh, kind of higher level, you know, what what are we going to be looking to be doing? Um, I would say i- i- in in the past, um, we've done a lot of of we've city council meetings do tend to be on the longer side, uh, compared to of other cities. And I think that that isn't necessarily a bad thing because it means that council is engaged. And I think that as long as council continues to be active and engaged, um, it it makes the city, it 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 does make the city healthy. Um, but it it does make things complicated when, um, council members don't necessarily see things by the eye. When those things happen, um, it definitely has to come to council either, uh, as an agenda item, as, um, a a a topic of discussion for, um, a committee. Um, so, you know, kind of taking a step back and and looking at, for example, uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, you know, we have fantastic parks, but as people walk around and see things, um, and and notice things, um, they may call the city office and say, hey, you know, can you go out and 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 take care of this? You know, this branch is true, true branches now. Um, and and I don't see that as 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 an issue, um, from a a member of a order committee or even council, um, letting staff know that that there's an issue that needs to be taken care of. Um, when those things happen, I mean, you know, it's it's to the benefit of the entire community that 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 issue is resolved. Um, but when there's 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 higher level issues, um, then then those need to come to council, come to the entire council for discussion and and ultimately, if there's disagreement, uh, well, and especially, you know, there's not a disagreement, uh, although due to provide staff with direction as the entire council.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Jamie?
Yes.
For now. Wow, would you like to go next, please? And then Donna will call you up and let you ask a couple.
So, Justin, I was, uh, struck by something you said a little while back, and, um, that was, that I think speaks possibly to your leadership style. And that was that when we asked you what you're looking for in an assistant, you said somebody strong at roads, and then you said you want to learn more about roads, which sounds to me like you functioned well in the team environment. Do you think that's true?
Yeah, I I I I would hope to say that that's fair.
Well, you know, and and I think we've heard a lot about that from from you in the past and the staff and, you know, about how you guys have come to now and about how you function other than former city manager. I guess, can you just talk a little bit more about your leadership style and maybe what you've learned in the last six months about that and how, you know, it's the changes that you've maybe had to make from your former position to your current position?
Yeah. Um, so, so I would say just just due to your first point that, um, we are a team. You know, from from myself to Marie, to Michelle, to Kurt, to, um, Jacob, at that that the D B W, we we all we all function and work together, um, and no one is sidelined. Everyone knows who who to call, um, when something happens or when they need something. And that's something that I think has has been a very positive, um, development for the city and and city staff. Um, and something that that I I want to continue, um, something that that I I believe is 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 healthy for a community and and a lot of communities don't don't have that. People do their their job, their thing, and everybody else is responsible for for their things and and I'm not going to interfere with that. Um, but as the city manager, that that's one that I want to continue to develop, um, that cooperation, that that, um, teamwork. And, you know, we've we've helped foster that through things like Breakfast with Budget, um, which is something that the former city manager put into place a couple of years ago, um, to help train and educate employees on on what the budget is, how much it functions, and they've they've really kind of taken ownership and 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 taken responsibility for for not just not just their department, but but how all of it works together. Um, and so I, again, I want to I want to encourage that. Um, but I also want to encourage them to to educate themselves and explore, um, their interests within within the scope of of what we do. Um, so, you know, we we have D P W employees who go and get and get water licenses. Um, and that only helps them do their job better. Um, so anything that 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 I can do and that we can do as a city to to encourage and and provide funding for 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 our employees to continue their education and and continue building their skills, um, while also working with with their their fellow employees, um, are all things that that I I feel are important and and want to encourage.
Thank you. Um, I guess that's sort of a random question. Um, so you've talked about being involved in a lot of the hiring process. How would you handle a bad hire?
So, um, I've I've had bad hires before. Um, I I don't want to get into into too much detail, but, um, we, I've I've I have made some bad hires and ultimately had to, um, sit those folks down and, uh, talk with them about the issues that that were ongoing. And ultimately, both of those discussions led to them not working for the city anymore. Um, and, you know, it then there's the different levels of bad hire. So, um, there there are folks who, you know, ma- maybe just need more direction. May maybe they're not getting, um, what they expected out of the position and making sure that that they understand what what their role, what 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 the job is and that they're meeting those expectations, making sure that those expectations are there, making sure that deadlines and timelines are clear. Um, but then, you know, there there are those who, you know, once things, once once you've had conversations about what's expected, what's what's intended, um, there there are processes in place depending on on what their role is. You know, for example, um, uh, there are differences between exempt and non-exempt employees, folks that are are covered by by the union contract and not covered by the union contract. And so, um, you know, for example, if it's a union employee, um, there's a a a six-month review period after hire. Um, and after that, then there's a a progressive discipline requirement within the the union contract. Um, so I I would say a part of it is it it depends on who it is and 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 how things are going. But but ultimately, communication and meeting with them and and making sure that things are as as clear as as we can possibly make them about expect.
Okay, can we call Donna then? Real quick. Donna, we're gonna call you up on the phone and let you ask Justin a few questions at your leisure. Hello?
Do I do I need?
No, you don't need to.
No, okay.
You're just gonna hear a speakerphone instead of.
Okay.
Hi, Donna.
Hello. Um, I do have just a couple of questions for you. One question I asked of the last candidate, and I want to ask of you. The city, the people who live in the city, it's a small town and it's homey, and we take care of each other. They expect to see their manager, and there are a lot of things happening in the community. Are you able and willing to sort that out and make yourself highly visible?
Absolutely. Well, um, so so I I hope that I I've I've started that already. Um, so, you know, it just in the last six months, um, I've had an interview with Amy Ozinski, um, from the Dexter Guardian. Um, I've had interviews with, um, Doug Merrin, uh, from the Sun Times, um, and I've had interviews with, um, Lucie Anne Lance, uh, and her, um, radio show. Um, so, you know, that there's 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 one piece of of trying to get myself out there and 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 visible in the community. Um, the other is is doing things like, um, attending project work meetings. Um, for example, you know, we 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 have, uh, the Dexter Crossing Road project coming up. Um, and as part of that, there's going to be, we are proposing that there will be an onsite meeting with with residents. Um, I expect that that I would be in attendance, um, for for that type of a meeting and and those types of meetings in general. Um, so I I um, in addition to 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 those things, I would also say that, you know, prior to COVID, um, we did have regular, um, in-person, uh, council town halls or meetings, um, where we invite the public and 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 requested and advertised that that the public come and and meet with with council and staff and and, um, participated in those town hall meetings. Um, and I would hope to 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 be an active participant in those meetings as well.
Thank you. Um, I have one more for you. Um, you have worked as, um, assistant now. Um, but prior to that, you worked with the manager and you, um, excuse me, and you performed as assistant. And while you've had those experiences, if you are awarded this job, it will, there will be some things that will be different, and there will be some changes, no doubt, you will want to make um, in the office and with your staff. Can you give us an idea of how you think that might go?
Sure. Um, so, you know, we we've we've had so I I I'll I'll kind of treat this in in two parts. Um, the first is, you know, we we've had, um, conversation with council about, um, um, potentials or pending staff retirements and and turnover. And I think that, you know, we're we're doing a good job get getting out ahead of it, um, and planning, uh, for those retire retirements. Um, and there there is the potential for, um, folks to take on new responsibilities. Um, so, you know, for for example, I know that, um, we we have an employee who is interested in another position once, uh, the other employee retires. Um, and so getting that person trained up and and and, um, preparing to to take on those responsibilities, um, is 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 going to be important, not just for that position, but for, um, handing off work and responsibilities going forward a- as as we enter into more and more, um, pending retirements.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, you know, a bit between that and the hiring of of a of a new potential of a new assistant, um, and getting that person trained and, um, integrated within within the office and and understanding the 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 different roles that that the different members play and that person's responsibilities and and the things that we're handing off to them and getting that person trained up um, is going to be important. And, um, there I I like to think that one of my strengths, one of one of my greatest strengths is organization. Um, and kind of fitting the pieces together. And so I I I I've been, you know, mulling over my head, you know, how how do those activities look with not only the staff we have, but the potential staff that we could have? Um, and the the filling of vacancies and and those positions as they come open. Um, that there that that's kind of kind of one piece. The other piece is stepping into the city manager position. Um, things are are slightly different in terms of of how I interact with all of the other members of staff, um, because it it we are, we are a team, and I was a member of that team before. But now, having now being the leader of that team, um, it is, it 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 does feel different. Um, and I I do want to keep all all the positivity and 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 all of of the teamwork attitude that, um, I had prior to stepping into the position. Um, but also make it clear that that um, there are expectations, that there are are deadlines and timelines, and it's it's my job and responsibility to make sure that that we are meeting. Um, and so I find myself go going to employees more and more and saying, um, you know, where are we at with this project? Um, you know, where where are you? Um, how 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 are things going with 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 this thing over here and and that thing over there? Um, just just to make sure that that they're on top of it, to make sure that I'm on top of it, and that I can relay that to that information to to council.
Okay, thank you. I'm on.
Thank you, Donna.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Zach, would you like to jump in?
Yeah.
With a couple?
Are you all set for now?
All right.
Uh, I'll start with with the easier one. What, uh, if selected for this position, what would your successful first year look like?
So I would say my successful first year is, um, nothing catches on fire. Um, no, I I I would say that that a successful first year is, um, meeting all the, meeting and continuing to do all the projects that we currently offer, um, and that we have been and and making sure that we aren't falling behind in any of those services that that we already provide. I would say that success would be meeting with with all the council. Um, and developing all of those relationships. And developing those relationships. Not only, not only keeping those 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 projects that accompany council moving forward, but helping council realize and and pull together all of your individual wants and desires and goals for the city. And and bringing those together, having everyone understand those and starting to implement those those goals, those objectives. And I would also say that that success would be implementing the budget convert that we're currently working on and being on target with continued success financially as a city.
All right. This is a variation of a question that Councilmember Griffin posed. So generally, at a personal level, on controversial stuff, council works pretty harmoniously. More challenging issues, we're not at Arbor, but we have proven unable to make decisions, and it's not necessarily because we don't have enough information. While ideally, council will be able to sort this out ourselves, how would you, if selected for this position, help facilitate resolution of tricky questions by the council?
Here, so there's there's a couple of ways to go about it. I would say one is to have additional work sessions. Because so- some of it is is just or it could be just a mutual understanding. And by spending more time together, dedicated to one subject when you don't have all of the other questions and and items before you run on a regular council agenda, sitting together and talking through one specific item, even if it takes a couple of meetings, can lead to to positive results. And and I think we've seen that on on other topics. The other is that there are specific trainings that are available for different topics. And eventually, having either council as a whole or individual members attend trains on specific topics to kind of broaden that scope of of all of the virtual options out there related to a given topic. Who could be beneficial? And I I know it's been been discussed before by Mr. McCarter, but if if worse comes to worse, there there are professional facilitators out there that are third-party, wholly and utterly unbiased, that have have no have have no concern about about a given topic that we could potentially bring in to help move conversation. So there 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 are options out there to to help work through some of those those tricky tricky subjects.
Right. Which transitions to the next one is oftentimes for for both the the tricky wickets and just general stuff we do, like even street design, it's highly technical. And it can be confusing. How do you approach communicating that information with both council members of the public? If you give an example, when you've had to do that previously?
Sure. So in, again, going going back to to the upcoming potential Dexter Crossing project. I've been working with with our engineers, Dan Curd, to to put together a a form that kind of helps lay out how we walk through the community engagement process. And part of that can be setting more regular community engagement activities, like like onsite meetings at thirty percent and ninety percent, where even before we kind of get down into the the nitty-gritty details, we have, we have an onsite walkthrough with the residents. And saying, you know, where where would you prefer your sidewalk? Do you, do you have any trees in front of your house that you want? You know, if if we put a you know, if if we have to put stormwater retention in, how does that look? And then, as we work through the design process, keeping folks informed through things like the website, through our email update and having we can actually have a specific email update groups that go out to like, or specifically residents of one street. And letting them know that, hey, we're we're here in the process. And provide either weekly or monthly or bi-weekly updates as we walk through the the street design process. And then at the end, have another onsite meeting that that walks through and says, okay, well, we've we've indicated that we're looking to put a sidewalk, you know, add that these flags, you agree or disagree, why or why not? And then take that that feedback in into account and and work to to update the designer or let the resident know why that may not work. Because while while, you know, we obviously want to do our best to to work with the residents and and take all feedback and and do our best to make them unhappy with with you know, the way that that things look and feel and not and operate. Sometimes that thing, things just, you know, are, you know, the the sidewalk has to be x feet from the from the road, or it's right up against the road for a reason or another, and talking through that and 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 seeing if there's any other options, but hopefully, hoping the residents understand why you've made the decisions that that we have.
So this one is is a bit different. As you're leaving here, let's say the the arms don't close and you get to meet the Amtrak Express. Of the things that you've done, either with City of Dexter or Taylor or anywhere else, what are you most excited about to put on your headstone? If you get to put one thing?
You know, honestly, the 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 thing that I I'm most proud of is the Lions Park Playground. The 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 Blue Playground at Edison and in our you know, you you might think that I might say something a little bit splasher like, you know, the the pace two trail or, you know, the difference hard hard installations. I I would say the the Lions Park Playground. I've, I can't tell you how many times I've driven by and seen kids playing on it. And how much how much awe I feel that I was a member of the team that that helped get that installed.
And one more, this is, I have full disclosure, this is just for you. So we have three, three folks we're interviewing now. The other two are obviously external candidates. So one of the advantages for external candidates for the organization is you get outside fresh eyes to examine things and bring in ideas from other places that may fit. How would you and obviously, their advantage for internal candidates, how would you I guess, make sure that you're looking at things with fresh eyes and examining different ways to do things where they may be appropriate?
Sure. So so right now, I am the Chair of the Michigan Municipal Executives Early Career Outreach Committee. But for the last ten years, I've 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 been in this profession. I've I've been a member of the Michigan Municipal Executives and an active participant in in that organization. And one of the benefits that I see of the MME versus, for example, the the National ICMA is that you get more interaction with Michigan managers. And you get more direct feedback from Michigan managers with regards to what they're doing, how 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 they're approaching topics and issues and subjects. And the the frequency and quality of training and and the the level of discussion is all fantastic and has has led to me bringing ideas back. You know, I, when I, when I go to a conference, you know, I I I take a big notepad with me and I fill up pages with with ideas and thoughts and 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 things that might be useful. For example, the the city's YouTube page. We did a video on the the construction of a wastewater treatment plant. And I I believe that that this is some of those ideas, like like the things that are cool projects that people might be interested in. Getting a video video that are taking pictures of it so that people can actually see what's going on. And and, you know, posting that to YouTube or making it available and advertising it, you know, can 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 get people excited about this, they might not otherwise get excited about. So.
I'm on set.
Please.
Again, I think it's a it's a new question for you, because the other two, again, being external. Given your, you know, your familiarity with the the city and how long you've been here, if you were not selected for this position, do you have a sense of how disruptive it would be to the current sort of state affairs of the city and given that, what sort of person would best fill the position to minimize any disruption to bringing somebody new in?
Sure. So I I consider myself a professional. I consider all of our office staff, all of all of our staff, period, professionals. And whoever gets this position, staff will work with them. And and staff will will bring them in. And 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 will bring them. If if someone external is is selected, I would say that that someone who can continue to be a team builder, someone who is not trying to come up with a better word, but dictatorial. So someone who comes in and says, it's it's my way or the highway. I I think that that would be the most disruptive. But somebody who who can be a team builder, somebody who who understands the value of education and training and lifting your team up is is someone who would fit the best with with the city, with the current cities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great question, everybody. So, Justin, what makes you uncomfortable? Either in your current role or the the previous role that you had?
Aside from the Amtrak question.
The the side of being hit by a train. To 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 be perfectly honest with you, being in the spotlight is is the thing that that makes me the most uncomfortable. So, you know, I I have done things like interview with Lucian Lance and Amy Ozinski. And and those types of things, I I I hope that I've done a good job. But ultimately, you know, my my stomach is in knots and I'm I'm afraid that I might say something stupid that will make it into the papers. So I I would say that that's probably the thing that that makes me the most nervous. Makes me the most uncomfortable, most most shifting in my seat.
You haven't shifted hardly at all today. So as 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 a career, as a career choice.
Yes.
You started in, excuse me, in Troy. You know, you've got the assistant to the city manager for the last six years or whatever, and now you're getting a taste of of being a city manager. Do you like it?
I do. I I I I I enjoy the work that we as a city do. And and being involved in all aspects of it. You know, I I think it's it's, you know, a pretty deep-to-death joke that, you know, you you have a list and you walk into work and that list goes, goes out the out the window because of the different things that that come up, but on the flip side, that also makes it exciting and and interesting. And being able to to work with with the staff that we have and the quality of work that they do. And knowing that that I'm I'm a piece of that and that I get to to help tho- the those team members up has been very rewarding.
Do you have bigger city goals?
If 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 selected, I mean, a- as long as as the relationship with council continues to be a good one, I could see myself retiring from the city of Dexter.
Thank you. Thank you. What else have we not asked you about that you would like to share with us? So that you're aware that, or so that five of us or six of us that are here need to know about you. What is it that you want us to know that we haven't asked directly?
Yeah, I I I talked a little bit about my role with the Michigan Municipal Executives as as Chair of the Early Career Outreach Committee, normally Next Gen. But I'm I'm personally dedicated to continuing education. So I I have my professional, my Michigan Professional Clerk's certification. I have my, I have a Michigan State University Extension Planning Certification. I I regularly attend Michigan Municipal Executive Training. And it's continuing professional education is something that I'm I'm very dedicated to, and that's something that I I I would like you all to know.
So so you, you know, you serve as our clerk. I'm gonna go there. So how many hats can you wear reasonably from your perspective? Or how many titles can you have? You know, we we're a smaller community. Our finance director is also our assessor. Three hats over there, you know, you're the assistant to the city manager, but you're also the clerk. Can you be the clerk and the city manager at the same time? I know you talked about finding somebody who have that interest. And those challenges. I I realize elections are cycles of effort, but
They are. And if 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 I'm selected and and I'm able to to select a replacement, eventually, I I think that I would hand off that that clerk title. I'm trying to get that person trained up to a point where I would be comfortable handing that off. Because elections are very spiky, but when they do spike, it's it's all hands on deck. And I think that that's something that I can help with. And, you know, the former city manager and I worked worked very well in that in that way, that I was the person responsible for elections and she helped. So I I I think that, you know, to to kind of your 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 first question about how many, how many hats can I wear? If if I'm able to select someone to to fill my my position, eventually, I would I would try and hand off some some of those responsibilities that that I am currently holding as as the interim city manager.
Gotcha. So this might be a tough one. Both for for me to hear, but I want to hear it from from your perspective. As a city, what what's our biggest weakness? What do you, what do you see? Where where's the area we need to grow the most? And I don't mean just in one little thing, but what would you, when you look at us and with your educational training, what is it that you would say we need to do better?
I I would say kind of the 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 area that I see kind of the most most growth potential in is our technological functions. As 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 we see here today. I I think getting some additional help there, because that leads to other things. In 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 addition to to growing our our technology and resources, you know, that that impacts our ability to communicate in a variety of different ways. It impacts our ability to make things more efficient, you know, for example, services, online services that allow people to to pay for permits online rather than needing to come into the office. You know, there's there's, you know, a ton of jokes about Facebook being being a an outdated software. And I tend to move on to TikTok and Periscope and and other other softwares. Because ultimately, you 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 need to be able to meet people where they are. And so if that means, you know, the city creating a Nextdoor account, to to be able to to see what people are, what concerns people have and and provide To see what people are, what concerns people have and and provide information. But at the same time, we also have to be able to have the time to manage those items. The the other thing that that I would say is. The the creation of. Recurring tasks. So. For example, we've proposed a tree trimming program. That would be an annual program where we would tackle different sections of the community each year. And I I think that there's room for us to to continue to explore. Kind of regular routine maintenance schedules. And I'm thinking about things like. Our equipment replacement. And we have trucks that are are twenty years old. That are from two thousand and one, two thousand and three, and, you know, we we. We try to have a maintenance schedule where, you know, we we, you know, make, you know, certain breaches in several years. But I I think we need to get caught up and and have those on, you know. So we have, we have this, you know, two thousand and fifteen project. When do we actually plan to replace that? You know, and maybe it doesn't need to be replaced that year, but. Knowing that it's going to need to be replaced within that within that timeframe and having that on paper and organized in a way that. If I get hit by a train, we can hand that off to somebody and and they they can pick that up and say, oh, okay, I can I can work with this and. And I know what's I know what's coming up on on the dot net. But I think that that those are some areas that that we can we can continue to improve.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We are, we're just about at an hour. Do you have questions for us? Or for council members that you didn't you didn't get to interview with the very first time?
I'm looking at you, Donna.
Down again.
What what are you looking for in a city manager? And and that that can go off to to anyone.
Yeah, so I'm looking for. Someone who knows our charter inside and out, who knows our master plan inside and out, who knows our community. Or capital humans plan inside and out, the budget inside and out. Cause I definitely, you know, in meetings, we get a lot of information and. I don't think this is the best analogy, but there's sort of like acute and chronic, there's like immediate and. Bigger picture, I so yeah, I know the best way to explain it, but. Often I think in meetings or when I'm looking through a packet, I can be so focused on this immediate decision in front of me and. Being able to keep that big picture in mind of, well, what did the master plan say? What did the charter say? And again, recognizing that that's also responsibility on council. And over time, I will become, you know, that will be become permanently stored in my brain. But I think I'm looking for somebody who has that sort of like procedural knowledge, that that knowledge of documents. So that when in a meeting off the top of the head, we can look to you and you can say, well. This or, you know, if we're not thinking about it, you can call that to mind and and remind us of that. So that's one thing that comes to mind.
And and, you know, to to that, I I think that, you know. Regularly revisiting our our goals and objectives. As as a council and and manager and staff, I think is is important. You know, the the budget process that we're going through now. And help with with kind of that that bigger picture. You know. Here's here's our our needs, here's what the budget looks like, here's what our projections look like for for the different funds and different line items. So that way everybody's on on the same page about. Kind of more immediate and a bigger picture.
Thanks.
It's okay.
So first, I would agree with everything Jamie just said. I think that's all very important. And. I guess building off of that, like having somebody who. Is available, not just for me as a councilperson, but for the community when they have questions about any of those things. And somebody, and I think you touched on this, somebody who gets out in the community and is just. Visible and the citizens feel comfortable asking them those questions if they have questions.
Alex, anything to add down there?
No, I think everyone's covered everything very well.
Donna, would you like to say anything more?
Can you hear me?
This would be yes, this is no.
Okay. I can hear you, but you can't hear me.
She's okay. I think she's okay.
Oh, am I on hold?
We're gonna call you. Hold on a second. We're just gonna probably make sure we got this.
Okay, here we go. I agree with you, who are our manager, to continue. Play place emphasis on working together. I want that to come from you down to staff, council, to citizens. I want somehow to get a stronger team built, so that would be a priority. And that's all.
Thank you.
Zach?
So I will not repeat things that have otherwise been said. But I will say that I have a unique experience of being elected official and working as staff in a lot of different places. So the the new thing that I could add is. For me, the the manager is is about providing information and guidance for council to help make decisions. And then enacting those decisions and. It's not just that, it's not necessarily sitting back and letting council do whatever, but say, hey, guys, we have to start thinking about these things. In five years or ten years, or. We we can't do this, we need to do this other thing. So there's there's part of the information and. Actually operating the mechanisms and having that knowledge. And communicating in a way so that elected officials who may not have experience or expertise in those areas can make the decisions. And then have those decisions happen. I also. I I may be unique in this, but I like it when. People tell me no. So for example, if I were showing up to the office every day and telling. Miss Annie Olds how to do something in zoning, I want her to tell me, get out of here. You're an elected official, you set the policy through there, I'm I'm the person here doing this, so. It not, it doesn't have to be me, you know, but if, you know, there's elected officials or board members in there who are. Trying to to run the train, someone comfortable saying, we got this. If you have stuff, we'll make it, get get your body, provide the guidance that way. Those are the new bits that I have.
And Justin, I'll go last. I think you know this, I like to see things done well. I like to see things out. From my. Observation over the last six months. I think you've done a tremendous job dealing with, being down a staff member. Picking up and and helping us move forward, the things that you've helped us see and do. In exploring this building is beyond any step we've made in this area. As a council for a long time and. You know, I I don't know how the process is gonna quite turn out yet. We're still in the interviewing stage. But I would just ask that if you become our city manager, that you continue to to lead our staff in that manner and. Keep us moving forward, keep us always looking forward, looking forward. We we can remember past. You know, those sayings that remember what happened to you, but. Look forward because the city is gonna be moving forward and. We need somebody that can be there to to guide that, so. Thank you for everything. Today and. Do you have any questions or last things for us?
I'm not gonna ask you how 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 you like meeting and.
I I actually like it. I I I'm not sure if this orientation is best or if, you know, I think. Having been in here truthfully to answer that question, I think I'm looking forward to it being this way, having seen you, but. I like it. Yeah, for today, this is this has worked out really well. Yeah, they went, yeah. We should have kicked the heat up an hour before we got here. Well, thank you. That concludes the interview and we appreciate your participation and and continued good work.
Thank you. Thank you all. They can, but.
Thank you, everybody. All right, I'm sorry. So we'll we'll take, so we we have our next candidate at four o'clock. I forgot about that. So where are we on the schedule? So we're taking a twenty minute break, get some fresh air, come on back. Makes sense? Okay.
Good luck. Hopefully, hopefully things go go well for the rest of the day.
The park is great, but maybe not say you drive by carts and look at children playing.
That's 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 fair. I I'll I'll keep that to myself. I just. Yeah, yeah, well, and. I'm I'm apparently there used to be a playground there. A a a number of years ago. And so it it got it got proven for one reason or another, so. You know, it it was easy to say, you know, hey, you need something kind of in the middle of of the city. Because there's kind of, there was kind of a dead zone to me, like the schools, playgrounds, and downtown.
Oh, is it this title of offering?
Yeah, I don't know if there's none of you while or whatever.
I love this story.
Thank you, thank you. So we don't know. I hope that.
I am or not? Okay, well then, why are they calling me? Oh, I I got. I got you. Oh, I got you. I got you, I got you.
Yeah, here for your hearing, we're here to this is over here too.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Robert.
Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
We're socially distanced, you know. I can't wait till we get back to shaking hands and.
You know, I'm good without it, to be honest. I'm one of those people, like, I'm I'm like. Uh, I enjoy this personal space.
Well, I think it was interesting because, you know, with my son, he's pediatrician. And I said, are things getting back to normal? You know, we're not just dealing with COVID.
We have no.
It's been dead. Kids aren't getting sick. Thought, wow, it's kind of crazy.
Uh, it was.
You have to see the upstairs in the first place. Okay, so, you know.
I don't really see a whole lot of of difference. And I'll tell you what, our staff would love to have. You know. Marie, every now and then she.
It's got some character, you know, I guess.
She was on the committee. She said, I'm not. She said, Justin did all of this, but it used to take three of them. And, yeah, and so, I mean. Late because he wants to get it done. Exactly. Exactly, and pass it on. But I don't. Is because he wanted to. You know, he didn't want to be part of hearing. Hearing, you know, how well.
There's a very interesting.
They're just.
Especially. When they need money. I'll get that should be listed, be good way. You don't have to go away there.
So this is last night, it's a four to four, so you brought apart, so this is what you're gonna be.
Absolutely.
We're giving Alex the ones over.
Do a council person's job.
And yeah, I see the one. We'll take this fall. Out back here. Council would probably face this way. Have a homecoming that. You know, something like that.
Now, what about this?
Well. It is, we we leave both of them are, and so, you know, if you're in the center. You can't see it now, but you're in the center. If you're gonna have some sight lines like that. Well, we were, well, what was thinking also was. It would increase the technology to. So they need to light out cameras, they're not cops, or a screen, but they don't want to see their things.
That's that's kind of a great. You're still invested in the system. And now we see the. Because everyone's. Oh, even my dad, two, two person games. Think in the tour because we had a little bit scare. But. So we want to look at the. But, um, but we do, I feel like the rest of it. And the promotion process is still what we have.
But we're getting, we're getting a taste today. What do you think? We shared it all myself. Where you sit down. All lots of us included, right? Here's a call off all council members. Right, any cell phone. Yes, we do.
Thanks.
I am sorry.
You know, you're totally fine.
Thank you for sanitized, I got now.
Nice to meet you. My name's Alex.
Sorry, I know.
Of course, no problem.
Never want to tree on somebody's shade like.
No problem.
We're doing a totally thing and then I'm handing you this, but I did just touch that, so.
So, you know, sanitized.
I've had one vaccine.
Yeah. I got mine this morning, actually.
Okay. How are you feeling?
I mean, I feel fine. I didn't really, my parents got sore on their arms after their first one, but like it felt like nothing. This one still feels like nothing. And, you know, I'm sick, that's only been a couple hours, so.
I got both Pfizer's like, I'll probably two weeks and one day, and nothing happened. I went to the gym the next day. That's awesome. So I feel like, you know, everybody has a different. Some people, it just suddenly, okay, some people are really sick, you know, we had three of our Pfizer players that got really sick. Honestly, no, I got it during that. Yeah, I mean, it is just, everybody's different, coming down with my mom, which I was pretending to take a bit of a finger for me, which.
Hi, Mel. Hi, I'm Elle. Nice to meet you. Across the distance. I'm sure you guys are pretty worn out by now. It's okay. Yeah. Definitely for me, it's kind of like, I'm ready to use me to write it. Uh, almost three and. Oh, those are. Fun to begin, it's like the hard parts.
Yeah.
Over. Until they're about fifteen or sixteen. So two and eighteen and fifteen and, uh, ones that you. So, two, and eighteen, and fifteen, and, uh, ones that you have, um, well, back home now, so, yeah. Those, those years from like that three age to about fifteen or sixteen were just like, so wonderful and beautiful, such a great experience.
I was, I think I knew, even, uh, you know, kind of, young, I didn't, it's kind of the, I did really like doing things when I was younger, too, family, the extreme kids, and the first, second, the fourth, and I was like, call me in two years, I would always. I ran across my dream college and the coach had a, uh, I didn't think, you know, everybody in the team was, was working on, making, I mean, I didn't care, so, I don't know, most of it was that, so, it was that hard. I mean, I got it, and then, but Jack's still now, so, but it's almost like, that would be the next thing, like, you know, once he's done now, everyone would say that, hey, you're not, it was so hard, I. Like, the most we expect, and I'd say, you know, yeah, but I, I mean, it's totally warming down now, so, um.
It's, you know, it's, there's no, it's feeling as a parent when your child is melting in public. And just, you, you know, everybody's, you feel like everybody's scared of you.
Right, right. But.
It doesn't even faze me, though, now that even, um, kids are older, even, so doesn't even faze me. So, I'm like, I'm like, what can I do to help?
Yeah. Well, I think what you're gonna, I don't think it was, and then she, you know, I feel like, this lady's messing with all, like, house.
Well, for me, it was like, too, I think that nap was a big issue, because I'm a schedule person, too, very much like you are, so, but, um, also, like, my work schedule. I see, it was like, planned, I work out, unless it was like at five in the morning, or at nine o'clock, if I, like.
I know, it's a, it's a.
Yeah, it was very.
I mean, it's very hard, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, yeah, it's, I'm, I'm. I'm supposed to be, where, I feel like.
Okay.
I didn't do last time, I need to do that. Yeah, because I can't wait for it.
Oh, and then.
Do you enjoy the?
It's definitely just, they were about this, it's like a time.
I, it's.
It's a good way to break a hook.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's so fun, well, it's wonderful, too, it's like, I was, I get letters, and I'm like.
Yeah.
Probably supposed to start a run when, when they're about six, about their six, and then, they still all work out together, that's just like, we do.
I was still wondering, I got one wish.
It's okay, but it was still just all the time, it's just nothing.
So, what?
I've got a plan.
Yeah, I have a plan.
Yeah, he's got a timeline right now, so, he's a freshman there, and, um, just went to school for the first time this last week, one day too.
Having worked at both Cuban vets, they're still demanding for a high.
Yeah, so it's kind of an interesting year, you know, not your typical freshman year, but, you know, I'm very proud of him, how he handled it, and.
The highest, highest profile.
Has been getting his homework done, and, um, he took a couple vacations, skiing with his dad, and then did a couple of other things that were, you know.
Now.
Took him away from school, and he, he was a little behind, like, he does, organize himself, so.
And your older one was a freshman here?
So.
Yeah, you know. I know, I know, but to end your, you know, your high school, like, with no, yeah. You're lucky, we did have, like, outdoor graduation, it was like, when they were first, you know, switching, like, okay, it's okay to do things outside for a little while, you know, and.
The schools don't really, but they're.
Because we just have, so, the township that I'm in now, um, we had a COVID outbreak.
Yes. So that.
Last week, so, I just went to the, was actually right when I had my, so we did everything outside, and I really, uh, it has some people, like, they. And you exaggerate a little.
So, in my magic world.
But I think, really, thanks, this person had COVID, and I ended up doing it, so I was glad that I went ahead and, like, took the professional, got everything down, we have a very small office, and. The day before the COVID, I really walked around all, so, you know. I'm gonna stop right now, so. I'm ready to be done with it. We're gonna get vaccinated.
Now, also, what are the challenges to how do we pull?
Yeah, I did, I was in An Arbor, um, for about fifteen years, and then I moved about eight, seven, for about seven, and then I kind of backed down, maybe, and all of a sudden, for five years.
Um.
That's much.
More site for those more.
Yeah, it's much, yeah. Okay. Okay, yeah, yeah.
And then for past three years, we wrapped.
Like, get a lot of people.
Yeah, I, I honestly, like, the whole time, I come from a small town, so. And my kids are done with school, and I will definitely be moving someplace, Dexter's always had my. Wonderful community, yeah, but, um, I live right now downtown, kind of, do you know where the Y M C is? I live like a few blocks down from Y M C, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm like, if I'm gonna be in An Arbor, I'm gonna be in An Arbor, I might as well be to be downtown, so that we can walk around as much as possible, and it's been really nice with the kids being teenagers, because. We can go walk downtown together, and, you know, when you're walking, it's always in the way, they're talking. You don't have to, like, if you're just going away, it's never time.
Right, right, right.
Um, from a bunch of crosswalks.
And it's nice because I can say, I think, go walk downtown, you know, go, you know, whatever I need from a store, or the farmer's market, get me this or that. And it's nice because I'm solely a lot independent, too, otherwise, you can't, or you can drive, you know.
We're even to be the, uh.
Yes, yes.
And maybe.
Even from there, I mean, it's not a big thing, some major ways, or things to downtown, I mean, that's part of my.
The usage.
Oh, that's great.
So, how was Lincoln able to do theirs, though?
I, I don't know, they haven't put any money into facilities for decades, I think, so. I don't know, there was one, one year when I was doing statistics, more than class two.
Nope.
So, we were all, most of the schools right out, and that quite per.
Drive carefully.
Lincoln's still have.
Okay, well, that's.
The press box was like a trailer.
Oh, great.
Brock on top of, place on top of the things.
Bye bye.
And when everything, like, face offs, it was, in the middle, it was dirt, it'd be powder dust, like, who got, okay, they're running that way, we got it.
Then they went to all of this now, that they have.
Our biggest problem, that's we got to.
Yep.
Wow.
I never.
That might be a little harder, that's.
I, I can't wear those pants.
Well, and the thing is, if it's, if it's that huge thing, uh, then the city or the school doesn't have to worry about creating, like, a support, so, you know.
So.
A school needs to be there for two hours a day, you, you want to use this, but you could have to, uh, route the, the winter, buy footballs. Um, you could do soccer games, like, water sports, so there are ways that you could make it work in better lanes. So that's my, that's my magic plan. A couple spots, a larger one, and I've heard from folks also that the closer the higher the floor, the better, because then, the rush tournaments for other types of things, easier.
Yeah.
And for adult league hockey, you will get yourself a bunch, a bunch more folks, get that closer access. Uh, so, the in-town option would be, uh, the corner of Shield, or the school on town, where there's that kind of open field, northwest corner of Shield and Baker. Between the roundabouts, basically, in the west. That can be tight. What's that?
Is there enough space, so?
It would be tight, so you can't put the hockey, the others up there, but the field paths can be very tight.
Yeah.
Um, but your advantage for that is you can have a parking area for days, during, and during clear stuff, or night stuff, there's a parking lot for Halloween.
Right, that parking lot, you're really, all, all, you can, you can, plus, we have like a more, you can have.
Yep, yep. Um, the other spot would be across from nursery on the.
Yeah, but this just can.
Which is a bit farther up, it's not, I, I.
The only one I can think of is the one that's probably all this. Is there another one?
You know, keep going south, on, on Baker, so halfway to the express.
Okay.
Um, act, uh, plant nursery.
Plant nursery.
I'm sorry, not in.
Okay, I see where you're. I know, I was, I was confused there, I guess I didn't. All right, can I see where that is now? Okay.
My, my community center.
That's a little bit, not so much in Dexter, is that in Dexter anywhere?
It's not within the limits, but within the, so that's the other thing, is that there, there's not a key to get signed, participate as well. And, uh, yeah. They bought the property and figured out what to do.
Do they have the?
You know, for what we have, what we get for it, and.
That is weird. Me, no, I just.
It's not even a filter. Well, it is a filter, but.
Everybody about ready? Okay, well, welcome, Elle, welcome, Elle O'Connell, um, our candidate number three on our agenda for our council work session. And, uh, this is an opportunity for you to get to know some of the other people that you didn't meet for the very short time, first interview round. Um, so, if we could just start off, uh, a similar question to the very first interview, if you would just start with your background, introduce who you are, your education, your experience, as how that might apply to the position you're, you're seeking, which is city manager for the city of Dexter.
Great, thank you so much, first, thank you so much for taking your time on this beautiful Saturday to sit with me, discuss the opportunity to work together. I am very honored to be here, I've always thought very highly of the city of Dexter, and I'm very excited about the opportunity ahead of us. So, my educational background is that I started out, um, from graduate Michigan State University, and I started at Plant Moran. I decided to work for Plant Moran because I had a full business kind of viewpoint, I did everything from auditing to tax work, to, um, even family, you know, financial planning. Um, it gave me a great overview of everything from start to finish. I specialized in nonprofits and government work, I fell in love with it because I found that when I'm saving someone money for widgets, or making sure that something works correctly for, um, you know, a plant and manufacturing, I derive about ten percent of the satisfaction that I do when I'm helping, um, a nonprofit, or even, you know, a community and, and helping residents. Because when we have our workers out there helping these people directly, you know, I might not be in all situations to be able to help somebody, but I know that what I'm doing is provide, providing a good foundation and framework for those to provide those great services in. Um, so, from there, at Plant Moran, I was able to, um, progress in working in government, I taught classes for Washington Community College, and from that class, which was a finance for non-financial managers, specifically for, uh, ended up being mostly nonprofit entities. Um, I started getting people come up, coming up to me and saying, hey, you know, I loved your class, but I just don't like accounting, you know, would you come in and would you, you know, help us with this accounting project or this service project? So I grew a business, um, that consisted of, and they have, consisting of sixty-eight state home moms that were all CPAs, that were home with their young children. And so this gave them the opportunity to work with clients, um, on a part-time basis, and it worked out great for my clients because they're getting CPA expert advice, um, at a price that they could afford. From there, I had an opportunity to work with Genesee County, um, their water and waste division, I hired there in two thousand nine, and, uh, was their chief financial officer. There I was in charge of a budget of a hundred million dollars. We had thirty-seven different communities that we served, um, for water and wastewater, and, uh, during my time there, we also opened up a new, uh, pipeline in from Port Huron, and I was able to participate in starting the new parent county water authority there, uh, and was privy to all. A whole bunch of exciting things that were happening, and trying to save not just our residents at the time, but residents in the future to come, um, on one of the greatest resources that there is, which is water. So, that was a wonderful experience for me. I spent some time, um, with Cronos after working there, because I had implemented the Cronos software for Genesee County, and when I did that, I did a study, basically, that said, you know, this is what we thought we were gonna save, that the efficiencies that we were gonna gain, and did this come true? So, I did an evaluation, and then I had presented it to our board, and, uh, the rest of Genesee County had liked it so much, they said, hey, you know, will you come in and do an evaluation like this for all of the different divisions? So I did that, um, and Genesee County was looking at going with full Cronos from all of the papers on hard systems. So when I did that, Cronos was obviously there at the board meeting, because they wanted to see if they were selected for the project, and, um, had enjoyed the presentation so much, they asked me to come on board to do that all across the country. So I was able to travel to Florida, had clients such as University of Berkeley, um, Florida State Hospital, State of Indiana Corrections. It was a really interesting time for me, but I also learned that, um, I really liked to be at home and make a difference in my community, instead of being, you know, traveling to all the different places. I worked for, um, here on Clinton Metro Parks as their chief financial officer, and currently, I am with the Township of Center, and I serve right now as their finance director, their deputy supervisor, and I also oversee IT and HR. And that leads me to today.
Thank you. So, in those roles, how has that prepared you to lead the city of Dexter?
Leading the city of Dexter is like an octopus, you have to know enough about every single different facet of the city in order to be successful. I've spent a lot of time learning each individual facet of government operations, local units, and enterprise funds. So, I have parks and parks specialty, I have a water specialty, and then I've also been part of just local units, so that I have spent time, you know, working with them on their, obviously, their finance, IT, HR systems. Um, and now with being a deputy supervisor, they're assessing, and also, um, so planning and zoning, so, I have a lot of cumulative experience, and, uh, it's hard to believe that I can sit here and say that I have twenty-four years of, of services to government and nonprofits.
And maybe you said this, and it just went in one ear and out there, are you pursuing a different degree?
Yes, right now I'm at the, uh, Eastern Michigan University, and I'm getting my masters in public administration.
Your primary, your primary background is finance, right?
Yes, and I am a CPA.
Right, a CPA, okay, just want to make sure everybody understands, she's pursuing her masters of public administration, as opposed to hazard, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I follow this, my mask is giving me a little bit of trouble breathing.
No, 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 it's all, great, so, um, I'll just ask a few more questions and then turn it over to some of the others. Um, talk a little bit about your experience overseeing people, how many people may be direct report to you?
Yes, I've had, um, direct report to me twenty-two people, um, that was at Genesee County, and, um, I was responsible from, for everything from hiring to letting go, performance evaluations. And I was responsible from, for everything from hiring to letting go, performance evaluations, everything to do with their individual contracts where their contract employees or union employees. Those were, that's the top number of direct reports that I've had. I've worked with the Genesee County for Water and Waste, we had 140 employees here on Clinton Metro Parks. We generally had about 200 to 300, but during the summer, we bumped up to 1,400. So I got to learn about the process of onboarding a large sum of people quickly and offboarding them at the end of it.
So you've had experience with job descriptions?
Absolutely.
Writing job descriptions and?
Yes, so when I walked into Genesee County, they had policies from 1970, if we were lucky. So I redid all of their policies and actually found that I really enjoy that work. And I've done it quite a bit, even actually in all of my roles, I've updated policies and procedures.
Gotcha. So, and this is, well, it was Zach's question in the first interview, but it's an excellent question. Share with us your plan of action for the first week or two, if, if you were to be hired as our city manager, what would you be doing in the first couple of weeks?
The first couple of weeks, I would be meeting with everybody. And when I say everybody, as many people as I possibly can, it's really important for me to show to people, you know, that they're very interested in what they're doing and how they're doing it, how we can make it better. And also getting, having time to get to know them. I really believe with my whole heart that in times of trials, that having those personal relationships and building trust between each other is what helps you overcome obstacles.
Can you give us an example of, 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 of where you've built trust in?
Absolutely. So, and Marie may commiserate with this, but with one of my AP clerks, she, you know, obviously was paying all the bills. So when you pay all the bills, you see every way the money is going out. She was also very active in our union and very distrustful. So she was very standoffish, you know. When we went into our, you know, the first round of union contract negotiations, it was, it was, I was almost beside myself. Because, you know, the thought process, well, if you can spend, you know, $30,000 on the tractor, how come you can't spend $30,000 on this improvement or wages? So the next time that we made negotiations, I had a little bit more time with her to really build that rapport and trust. And, and she could sit and come to me and ask questions, well, you know, why was this $30,000 important? You know, why did, why did they think this is more important than what we're doing? And I can say and explain to her, you know, this is the reason we made the choice, not that it's more important than what you're doing, what you're asking for. So in that time, it, it really is just an example too, because that person that is paying the bills and having money go out the door, you want to have that trust factor with so that they can come and ask you questions instead of negativity being spread. And I think that was one of the times that I realized the greatest strength from that, just because it, it calmed down the outspread of dissemination of information.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna look to my left or right and let a couple other people jump in for some questions. Jamie, you want to go?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
So in my experience, when you join a new, newer organization, can be a really exciting time because you're being a fresh set of eyes. And I think oftentimes might see what other people kind of has already faded to the background. And so I'm just wondering, you know, in that time, I think that, you know, you have to see the perspective. And I can see it can kind of be a balance of wanting to step back and listen and learn, but also maybe wanting to act on some, you know, room for change that you might see that maybe has been overlooked. Can you talk about, you talked about a little bit, you know, the first couple of weeks, you know, getting to know everybody? Can you speak to, you know, at times in these other organizations, when you, when you have to come on, what are, are there times where you've noticed things that seem like they need to be changing? And how did you negotiate that or navigate that?
I think that what I'm going to use for an example is because during these times where I've actually done this, and I've done it every, every single job where I've had a leadership role, and I have found it to be one of the most valuable things that I've done throughout my career. I've realized, you know, kind of, I'm going to use timekeeping system as part of it, you know. And I've talked to our A R, how time was being captured, and then our payroll person, you know, having, this reaches every single different department. And having 17 different ways that time is collected is very inefficient. And I was finding that, you know, this person would be collecting the time and calculating it and then putting it into the format that they like and that their boss likes to review it in. Then emailing it or printing it out and then putting it, you know, giving it to the next person. The next person then puts it into their format, how they like to see it. And you have the same document touching literally probably five, six places and being reformatted. Well, each time it does that, that's one hour, two hours, three hours, four hours, you know, so it becomes a big slowdown to the process. And so I could see those types of situations right off the bat and I might say, hey, how about we just go from here? And even though the information doesn't look exactly like how you want to make this change and this change, so incorporates the information that you need, and we'll just send it. And you can just email it instead of wasting all that time. And then eventually creating, you know, an automated system where the punches are recorded, it's in our computer and we can just approve it and go forward.
In any of your roles, have you had a direct interface with a city council?
Yes, so, well, when I say council, so I've always had boards in the workplace, starting at Genesee County, we had 37 different communities. So we had 37 different board members that were part of that community and I had direct interface with all of them. And then at the Metro Parks, we had a board and I had to direct it, you know, I'd sat at the table and, you know, compile the meetings, stuff things together. Anything they had questions on or, you know, items that we needed to bring forward, I'd bring them forward and kind of operate and facilitate those items.
Okay, so this is a question I've asked of the, all the other candidates. So ours is a can, is a council manager form of government in which the city manager is the chief administrative officer of the city. I'm somewhat new to this, I was only elected in November, so I've been attending some trainings at the Michigan Municipal League. And so some things I'm learning in this form of government, individual members of council and the mayor do not have the right to direct staff to perform any function or activity. Individual members of council and the mayor should not be interfering with the day-to-day operations of the city. Rather, the decision of a majority of council is necessary to provide direction to administration. From whom, if anyone, will you seek guidance about the day-to-day operations of the city as you begin this role? And how will you create healthy boundaries to ensure that you are following the direction of the council as a body, as opposed to the direction or wishes of any single council member?
Well, here specifically at the city of Dexter, you have an amazing strategic plan. So that is the directive that everyone has gotten together and decided this is the path that we want to go forward to. At every single meeting, you're making decisions and setting policy, you're the legislative piece of the government. So I take my direction and how to proceed from the council, from their vote. And you set the policy, you set the directive, my goal is to then go forth and get the policy in place, get it working and enforce that policy. If you give me a target goal, if we want to work on this, this next fiscal year, that's what I'm going to do. And setting boundaries as far as, I'm going to ask you a question back, you're setting boundaries, you mean from staff interacting with the council or do you mean, like, how do you mean?
Right, so just ensuring that no, that no single member of council is interfering with the, with your ability to manage the administrative functions of the city? Or is there, is there time, it's happened in the past and you've had to maybe set a boundary or?
I've been very blessed to work with wonderful board members. I have found that, you know, given the situation and, and, and just, you have to build trust with your council. And I think that once you have the time to make that happen, those situations just are so less likely to occur. I've never personally experienced that. However, if it was something that was troublesome, because I do feel like in the worst case scenario, if a council member felt like, you know, the city manager wasn't performing their job or needed to talk to an employee directly, I certainly wouldn't want them to feel that they couldn't do that. I think that that's, you know, appropriate, but understanding this, the situation of roles, you know, certainly hope that they would have a discussion with me about it before then.
I just have two more questions. So regarding your employment history, it looks like there's maybe a gap between 2001 and 2005. Is, or is there something that was going on during that time or did you just step away from the workforce or?
Yes, that's when I had my children.
Okay. And then in terms of your consulting business, how would you see that continue? I'm pretty tricky, I'm just thinking about the potential for conflicts of interest, I guess, and I don't know who your clients are or things like that, can you speak to that? Would that be able to continue or what would that look like or how would you manage that in terms of your role here and there?
With my role at, at Sumter right now in their township, I have basically taken it back to, to very, only two clients. They are family trusts and task clients. And this year actually was a first year and I suggested like, let me help run somebody else. So those items have been removed.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so you mentioned that, you know, pretty much in every role that you've had, that you've come in and tweaked policies and things like that. And all organizational culture is a huge factor in the workplace, and I think it's one of the most important things. So I'm wondering if you have an example of coming in somewhere and tweaking things and getting pushback from the people who used to do it a different way and how you might handle something like that?
Exactly, so bringing a brand new CFO at the age of 29. I came in and, you know, thought Cronos was a great idea from the different, excuse me, from the different things that I had seen. You know, if we could have this automated system, it's going to be amazing and everybody's going to love it, look at the money we're going to save. I just am so crazy excited, you know, I get it in, get it approved and I start implementing it. And all of a sudden, you know, I have workers at one of the plants that are defacing the time clock. And, you know, and then we have other situations where, you know, people are calling constantly saying, you know, that it didn't read my card or my card didn't work. And I had to step, take a couple steps back and say, okay, I'm changing a lot quickly here. And, you know, I need to really kind of readdress what's happening and make sure that everybody understands what we're doing. And in some instances, you know, after a little bit where time was given, a little bit more training and understanding of why it was important, because it really affects the long-term financial stability of the organization. And that represents our ability to pay your pension and to pay these other benefits that you're going to have when you retire. And making it more valuable to them. We still have issues in this instance, as we ended up having to put in cameras so that the time blocks were repeatedly being defaced and, and kind of mangled.
How do you, I mean, how would you say you learned from that experience in your future jobs where you may change, continue to make changes to things?
Right, the biggest lesson I learned from that was to take a step back, to approach things more slowly, to kind of sit back and say, okay, you know your workers, you know, the department head, you know your workers really well, how can I connect with them? What's going to be most meaningful? Is it training? Is it just time where we sit and talk about it? Is it, you know, slideshows? You know, how is it them having to understand why the board wanted to do this, why I think it's important, you know? What makes it work for them? And so I approached it from a much slower case and a little bit more agile positioning so that I can directly interact with each person if need be in a department and give them the opportunity to kind of say how they feel about it or, but that's been my biggest lesson learned was to slow down. And you can get really excited and you can be very happy about what you're doing for, to save money or to make things more efficient. But in the long run, you know, kind of slowing down and really taking that time to make sure that everybody is excited as you are is really important.
Okay, and just one last question. This is about your work at EMU getting your MPA. What would you say are the classes that you're taking with that degree or that you have taken or that you're looking forward to take, that are filling the gaps in your experience that you think would help with this position?
So right now I'm taking a lot of the past semesters, but a lot of strategic leadership and learning how to not just, you know, put together a strategic plan, but what it's most important to that, and also collaborations. And collaborating is something that I'm a big fan of, it's, I think, the key to be, being successful in the oncoming years that we're facing as government. The areas, the fill-in classes where I have choices, where I'm really looking to fill, would be the assessing. And also I have had the chance to be a leader with HR department several times, but I've never really had the training or the details, so I'm actually looking into taking some of those classes as well.
We have. Yeah, Dana, we're gonna call you, so if you'd grab your phone, we can have your voice here.
Okay. There we go. Nice to meet you.
Thank you. I'm gonna look up for a picture.
Citizens in this community are close and friendly, look after each other. And I wish that they have access to you. They're going to want that. And how are you going to communicate your accessibility to them?
That is the absolute most favorite part of what I get to do now. In the township I'm in now, really with all the different roles I'm filling, I'm acting as a township manager in a lot of ways. And having, going from the finance director role where your, your communication actually with residents is kind of limited, going into an open space where you have lots of different residents coming in to talk to you is definitely hands down the best part of my job and the thing that I love the most. I really love listening to what they have to say. I take value and stock in what they have to say. And I truly believe with my whole heart that it's very, very important that everybody feels that they can come talk to me about anything. And then I think that technology, the way that we communicate, that we're available is, you know, making sure, I think the website probably is the biggest tool that residents use to see what are the hours, can I come in and can I talk? Or, you know, can I reach my phone? And I will let you know that this is something that's so important to me that I even put my cell phone number out on the website now so that anybody can get ahold of me at any time. I really think that that is the most important thing that we can do is be able to hear the voice of our residents.
Thank you. One other quick question, the group that you're going to be joining have worked together for a long time. They've been in their positions for a long time and they've worked together and they do well together. How are you going to assimilate yourself into the group?
One of the reasons that I believe I'm sitting here in front of you is because the time that I've had to be able to spend with the staff, I felt like we were already assimilating. They are very like-minded to myself, hardworking, smart working, but hardworking as well. And making sure that we were always making the choices to do the best that we could for the residents and for the council. And I have a very similar mindset and really enjoyed my time with them and felt that there was already a good task started in the direction. And for me, I think coming in during those first few weeks and really taking the time to get to know everyone and what they do, so that six months down the line, I don't, you know, sit and talk with somebody and say, oh, I didn't realize that you did that. That's something that I want to avoid at all costs. But I think that taking the time to personally get to know people and also, you know, having kind of good rapport from the, from the ground really helps with getting assimilated into a group that's already established. And everyone's so welcoming.
Thank you, I'm all set, Josh.
Thanks, Dana. Zach?
All right. It's been a while since we received your information. So one of the things that you have added on there that you touched on briefly at the beginning was deputy supervisor. I'm very familiar with townships, but for other folks who may not be, could you describe what that position entails?
So what that position entails is that anytime the supervisor is not in the office, that I. So what that position entails is that anytime the supervisor is not in the office, that I operate in his absence, and that is everything from planning and zoning, assessing taxes, and then anything also to do with the board packet and agenda with getting items on the board and interacting with the community, and any items that they may need to bring to your attention. Roads, water and sewer.
It's, it's a weird, those are your kind of work countries, it's weird, you're kind of a manager but not entirely, and it's, it's. If selected for this position, what would a successful first year look like for you?
A successful first year would be assimilating with the group, number one, and number two would be really aligning myself with council. Looking at the projects that they have in place, and that those things have been started, that we're making progress on the direction that we wanna go. And a constant look at how we're doing and evolving, and, you know, making sure that those objectives and goals are being met.
So our council works pretty well on most topics, we get it well along together personally. But there are some controversial topics that we haven't been able to get to the finish on. And ideally, council would be able to do that ourselves. But in cases where we would need manager or staff to help assist us, how would you approach that? Can you give an example of where you may have done that in the past?
Absolutely. My methodology to that is looking at facts. So I'm a CPA, so obviously facts and figures are very important to me. And I don't think that they lie very often, even though they can be tweaked and twisted. And then also, you know, looking at what's best for the residents. I think if you're taking those things into consideration and putting all the facts that, you know, are impact, whether it's a project or it's a policy decision, you know, looking at how the residents are gonna be impacted and what's gonna be best for them. And then also looking at how, you know, the facts lay out as far as, you know, the monetary impact and, you know, it's hard to do without a specific example. So I would say that in the most recent, we had, we have a building that is dilapidated and old, and it's falling apart. It needs, you know, forty thousand dollars spent on the front door to make it a handicap accessible. It needs a new roof put on, that's gonna be another twenty to thirty thousand dollars. And we are just in the beginning phases of looking at, okay, so do we go ahead and put all the money into this building? Or do we add on the back and put a new, new, because the wardroom is quite small and it's, it's hard to fit everybody into? Do we put in a new wardroom and just kind of reorganize the building? And spend the money to improve what we have, or do we think about starting from scratch and looking for a new site? And already together, I'm putting, you know, all of the facts and figures together of the potential cost, how much a building's gonna be, site plans. I was able to find some site plans that were drawn up a few years ago and kind of going off of those, and looking at the land that we have available. And the cost that's gonna take to get us there versus, you know, we also have a police station too, that's in the same type of rough shape, that's an old school building. And looking at putting those buildings together, what the cost would be, what the benefits would be to the residents and to future residents there.
Those kind of ties nicer for that one. Oftentimes, as a city, we, we deal with highly technical things that are maybe difficult to share, both with elected officials, appointed officials, and with members of the community. How do you approach communicating that technical information, and can you give an example of how you've done that in the past?
I think having, you know, a good relationship with the board and knowing, and having that trust and that history built up is the foundation, so that they can have faith in what you're saying and what you're talking about. You know, the technical aspects, when you talk about technical aspects, I'm assuming that what you really mean is kind of some tender aspects of a project or, you know, a situation. And, you know, I think that I've had wonderful experience with, with boards and council members, that they're very intelligent and understanding and adept, and they can pick up kind of what you're trying to say with, once that relationship is established of the technical stuff behind it. So it's very important to be able to have that kind of cadence with your board. And when you say technical, is that what you're talking about, or something?
Well, so for example, like property taxes, I know we get a lot of people who buy a house and they'll be, they'll come in irate. The taxes, last people, it was five hundred dollars, why'd I have two thousand dollars? So that's, that's a bit complex going through the tax legislation of, yep, it was, but it uncaps, and so there are things that most folks aren't aware of most of the time, that now are complex and not necessarily easily understood.
This actually is, it's not understanding more. This is something that I love. I taught college, basically financed, and I'm financial managers. So people walk into the class, I say, whoa, this is too much for me to understand, here's the white flag. It's something I really enjoy. I definitely have a way with helping people understand, you know, getting from a very technical type calculation down to the endpoint. You know, having years of working in accounting, I'm sure that now a whole bunch of people wanna walk in and understand actually how financial statements are put together, and how they go from the different general accounts to what we see as the beautiful final project. So my whole career actually has been spent, you know, taking something that's very technical and turning it into something that's very meaningful. And so I tend to do the same thing when I speak to individuals.
Thank you. This is a bit different question, I'm not gonna ask you how long it would take to wash all the windows of Dexterville. You'd mentioned you went skydiving. The setup for the question is imagine you go skydiving again for some reason, and the chute doesn't open, and you get to pick one thing from your work. One thing from here, because the parachute didn't open, you're not gonna be able to figure it out, but what one thing from your work experience would you wanna put on your headstone? That you're most excited about?
I never give up. I'm an overcomer. I, you know, when I have a goal in front of me, I find a way to make it happen. And I help people along the way of achieving those goals. So that's one thing that I'm very proud of, is that I really feel that I've touched a lot of different people's lives and made them better. And that I have been in positions where I've really helped move organizations forward to achieving what their strategic plan says are achieving, where they wanna be in five years. And even looking at things that they didn't understand they wanted to look at as we went down that path. So for me, I think that, you know, I really, I guess you're asking, what I'm proud of, I'm proud of the fact that I'm a very persistent and dedicated person who always makes sure that those goals come true to the best of my ability, help improve people's lives.
I'm, I'm all set for now.
Thanks, Zach. No, any follow-up? Jamie, you want, or you want me to jump back in?
I have something.
Okay.
It's a very basic question. I mean, I appreciate your positivity, don't get me wrong. I have never been accused of being a positive person. So I wanna ask you, how do you deal with difficult people?
Dealing with difficult people, I guess, is circumstantial. In my, you know, in my 24 years of government, I've had difficult people from auditing, you know, where you come in and they're automatically, you know, they're, you're the worst person in the world because, you know, you're auditing their books. I'll, I'll never forget, I was at a nonprofit one time, and came in to sit and do their audit so that they could get grants. And, you know, there was an older man that was, that worked for the nonprofit that didn't understand that. He thought I was coming in from the government to check in and see what they were doing. And he came in yelling at me, and I just didn't listen. I sit and listen, and then I talk to them and help them understand what, you know, why I'm actually there, what the purpose is. You know, to, to employees, you know, disgruntled employees that, that are unhappy, and there's generally a reason for it. And I sit and I listen, and I talk to them, and I know that I can help in some areas, kind of, you know, put some sad on the wound that they may have from the past. But I generally have found that more positive that I am, and the respect that I show to everybody, that that just exudes an amazing relationship with people. I know currently now, in my position, there's one employee that I work, that's a direct report to me, that everybody in town shows, like, you, you know, you, you have one to deal with there. And, you know, with the relationship to build with her by listening to her and giving her respect really has returned respect to me. And she is one of the most productive workers that I have right now, so.
So play off of the listening, Lev, how would you describe your leadership style?
My leadership style is, I like to lay out in every different way, so that everybody, everyone learns a different way. So I always like to say, these are our goals, I very, I communicate our goals very much. I like to bring in everybody, I'm very collaborative, that's one of the lessons that I learned when I was a young CFO. Is pull everybody in together and make sure all the different pieces are, can talk. So I like to be collaborative, I like team effort. But I also like to make sure that we're all headed in the direction we're supposed to be. So that's where communicating and the goals and how we're gonna get there, and working together as a team comes in.
Can you, I, I know you've put together a lot of budgets, or been a part of putting together a lot of budgets as a finance director in your roles here. Talk to us about your process for putting together a budget, how would you go about doing that?
I always start at the department heads, you know, obviously being the finance director or the CFO, we know the numbers pretty well. So I'll start with, you know, all the different department heads, anybody who has oversight over a budget, we're gonna sit and talk. And, and this is with the background of me spending that time and going out and knowing them and learning what they do. Understanding, you know, what the different components of their job might be, whether it's the police department that needs to buy certain protective gear, whether they need, you know, to have tablets that go in the car, you know, even to the equipment that goes, just understanding what they need so that if we do buy a new interceptor vehicle, I know the cost that's gonna be associated that goes with it, and kind of talking about the assets. Bringing them useful information that I have from what we did this past year, or the past two years or three years, and combining that with what they, what they know, and they're the ones out on the ground, I certainly am not. So if I can talk their language, and again, build that trust and have that relationship. So I start with the department heads, and I build it from there, and, you know, basically have their input and have my input. And once we agree on this is how we could go forward, then I go up to the next step. And that would be, you know, the, the managers, direct executives, and go to them and say, okay, this is what each department came up with, this is their needs, and let's prioritize them as a group together. And then once that's done, if there's a project that I know of that is near and dear to somebody's heart, that is not on the, on the docket to go forward, I'll go back and I'll explain why, so that they understand and say, but listen, we know this is important, and we're gonna do it in year two or, or five, because we know that this is something that we need to take care of. And then it obviously goes to the board.
How do you, how do you interact with the board at a budget, on a budget like that, after you've got all that brought together, what's, what?
Yeah, so after I've got it all locked together, in most boards or councils that I've worked with, there's been a budget committee. So there'll be a smaller group of the council that will work with me. So at that point in time, I would be working with a smaller group, like the, the finance or budget committee, and explain to them exactly the process that I went through, why we selected the projects we did, why we took out what we did, or, you know, the staffing needs that need to be increased. And they're gonna kind of ask a lot of questions and maybe show a different perspective of, you know, what they're concerned about. And I might adjust some things even after that. And then we have a public hearing where we have the, I'll come in, they can look and they can ask questions, which is actually my favorite, favorite meeting, even though every time I'll get one or two people. But I love explaining why we're doing what we're doing, getting the residents' input on things that they see that are needed, because they're really out there on their day-to-day basis, looking at what's needed in the township. And then by the time we go to this final budget hearing, it's been vetted and people are very familiar with it.
So I'm interested in the process you described, you didn't get board input first, which is the makeup of the citizens or the residents.
So.
So how does, how does that come in after?
So the strategic plan is what I would start in with the budget. So when I would go to, you know, burst out to the departments, right? I already have a strategic plan, that's what my budget, my initial budget document's built off of. So that's where we would start, sorry, I kind of glossed past that, but that's where we would start, and making sure that we had, you know, if it's, let's say it's something that's important to the board, to say, hey, you know, we feel like we're just kind of going through unneeded new vehicles, you know? And that's not something that I know is important, I will sit down and talk with, why do we need to do these vehicles? I can get the facts and the figures. But absolutely, we'll start with the strategic plan and making sure that the budget is in line with that the whole way we go.
Okay, so we're, we're in the cycle then, since it's an annual cycle, where in the cycle is the strategic plan updated in your mind then?
The strategic plan has been updated every year, so after, generally when the financial statements have been approved, at that point in time, we sit back and we can say, how did the year go? Did we end up, you know, being in line with what our plan was, as far as how, what we actually spent? What were the things that we spent our money on, did they line up with our strategic vision? And that's a process that I'm using right now with the township that I'm in.
Okay.
I've had, we've had it different ways in other places, I've been.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just trying to get familiar with what kind of process you've used and type of thing. So have you had a chance to review our draft budget at all? Any observations you care to share?
It's, it's very difficult to say, for me to kind of have an opinion, because I don't know what's behind the, the numbers or the decisions or the processes. But I can say that the process that you follow with your strategic plan is one of the best that I have seen. I love how you have all of the different goals out underneath your objectives, and then how that fits within the budget and what you're spending. So it's a very well thought out budget, and, you know, I guess I hesitate to say any changes that I would make personally, because I would definitely wanna make sure I'm educated on why things are done a certain way before I would, would step out and actually recommend something.
Gotcha. Okay, so let me switch gears a little bit, I thought you answered those questions well. What makes you uncomfortable?
Aside from masks.
Aside from masks, yeah, and, and questions about jumping out of airplanes, or whatever it was.
What makes me uncomfortable besides the mask, you know, is I think that whenever it's focused in on me, instead of, you know, being focused in on my, on the work that we're doing, I can sit and talk all day long about what I'm doing collaboratively with, you know, the townships around us to, you know, help save money for everybody involved, and I get really excited about that, and I know all the detail, I think when it's time for me to sit and talk about myself, it's definitely a little bit more difficult. But as far as in a work setting, what's really difficult for me is when I'm, excuse me, when I have situations where employees just can't see the bigger picture, where they're focused inside of themselves and not willing to move forward to outside of themselves and doing what's right for the city. I'm like a whole cock, you sing on here. So that's, that's probably the most difficult thing for me that I struggle with, because it's something that is very intrinsic to me, you know? Even if it's not something that I wanna do, I'll always do something that's for the greater good. And when I come up against employees that are not minded that way, it's a struggle.
So what, you touched on, how did you put it, saving money with other townships, or talk about things that you've collaboratively worked with other townships on saving money? Could you give us some examples of those?
Absolutely, so. Most recently with the township that I'm working with right now, let's say Wayne County is overloaded, and they don't have enough resources to, to the type of services that we were used to receiving. Let's say Wayne County um, is overloaded and they don't have enough resources to to the type of services that we were used to receiving like the lawn cutting at the sidewalks, uh, the side of the road, the dredging. I'm just going to cough for a second.
No problem.
This is just in my throat. And so our community is really, you know, we get calls in the day, my ditch is made from high water table. So I started a collaboration with the other townships around me and right now I found that we have their human resources and they have the equipment. And so we're starting right now to do both townships so that we actually can use their equipment to to do the ditch strategy and do the the cutting. And then we're starting to open it up to other townships around us.
Nice. So you're sharing resources, is what you're saying.
Absolutely. And the same thing with salt. Uh, we're looking at building, I know it sounds, sounds trivial to some people, but salt is, you know, a big cost. If you don't use it and you don't have the proper storage, it all goes to waste. So we're looking at building a community salt storage and buying that at a lower price because we'll be able to buy a larger quantities together.
Gotcha. Nice. So what do you know as the significant differences between townships and cities?
The way the government's structured. Oh.
Okay, so just talk about that then.
Okay, so with townships, it's a very organization. You have the treasurer's office, the clerk's office, supervisor's office, and then you have four trustees. So there's a lot of very, so you only have, you know, the treasurer who will come to the meeting and he'll be on hold. And his office kind of operates on its own. And then you have the clerk's office that kind of operates on their own. And the supervisor's office that sometimes operates on its own. And then you have your different departments that kind of fit in and it's, it's kind of like what you had said, it's it's a, it's a difficult organizational structure for for some things because there's not one person that you report to. You report to three different people depending on what you might need or the whole board. So it's very, a very, very flat organization where cities are structured to have, you know, the different levels and steps up as you go. Which makes it in some ways easier for you to know, you know, what's expected, who you report to, what needs, what information needs to go where. Where are the townships? Because it's so flat, it's always a struggle to be disseminating information and make sure that everybody's, you know, knows what's going on.
Gotcha. Is is something a charter township? I can't remember. No, not that church. Okay. What questions do you have for us? Or wait, no, that's not the question I was. What have we not asked you during our Q and A that you want us to know about yourself or your desire for the position?
I think the one thing that, um, and I really do need to apologize. I've been struggling with this cough and tickle in my throat the whole time.
That's okay. It's okay.
But the one thing that I wasn't asked, which is, no, why are you the perfect fit for the job? Why should and my answer to that is you have an exceptional team here. You have some succession planning that needs to happen. And I think that my experience is broad and it has a lot of depth. And I've had a lot of different experiences that I can bring from different organizations within and add to a team that can help sustain the growth of the city from an administration perspective. Uh, the other part is that, um, I've always been fondly in love with the city of Dexter. I moved to Ann Arbor about 20 years ago originally and spent most of my time over in Dexter here. And it's because I grew up in a small town. I want to end up in a small town. I've been in very large organizations and I am so grateful for those experiences. I have learned so much um, in my time there, but I know in my heart of heart that I want to end up in a, in a small community. And professionally, if I were to write the end of my perfect story, it would be here in Dexter. Like being able to stay here for the rest of my time where I'm working before I retire, even after, you never know. So I think that that is definitely something I want everybody to know that, you know, I I really love the city. Um, and I really care about the community here. And I just think that the growth that has been accomplished during the last few decades has just been amazing. And I want to work to make sure that that stays continually forward and that we serve residents.
Okay, now I can ask you. Do you have any questions for us or any members of council that you hadn't met before?
Well, it's one of the questions that you actually asked me. You said, you know, how would you know that you, you know, what would you like to accomplish in the first year? And like we touched on this before, but I'm going to touch on it again since everybody is here in the room. I really want to know, I I really want to know, you know, within you, you know, what a year from now would cause you to say, L has been the best choice that we could have made. You know, I I'm so happy with the way that things are timed out with L and the city. What would be the things that would have happened from the time I start till a year from there that would cause you to react that way?
Would you like to lead off?
First, um, I was happy to hear you talk about policies and procedures, um, and how that's sort of something you've been doing and also places you've been. I think that's something that I would like to see, um, making sure that we have ordinances in place that we see that are working to be in place, uh, making sure that we're meeting what is specified in our territory. Um, and happily, a year from now, you can be able to make a decision on the fire station. I think that would be amazing. So again, I'm really new to this, so those are the things that jump out to me. I'm curious to hear what other people think.
Um, I guess just two things really that, again, building up on that, that we've closed the book on the facilities discussion, not closed it entirely, but closed it to the point of operational. Um, and also that the staff is still working as well together as it is today and that it has, um, yes, much of a team feel and that all that's still really important.
I'll I'll add a variation on that is, um, staff does, is punching way above what weight they ought to be. Because you mentioned working hard and smart. Um, happy year for me would be if they're even happier, if if they continue to be involved in improving processes and and those types of things. And if they're excited about implementing things that you may have brought from other communities, that they get to participate and help shape. From the council standpoint, um, successful year, I'm not going to touch the other things that that were discussed, but that we feel well informed and that our our policies are being implemented and that you as the manager would have added value to help us think of things we may not have otherwise thought of. That's, that's what I'll add.
Wow, would you mind calling Donna? I'm letting Donna have a chance next? Thank you.
There we go. I, I just, I, to the last candidate as well. When you come in, there's a group of people that you're enjoying that are working well together and have a long time. I'm hoping that you'll be able to carry that on and let that come down through council and through our residents so that we are all on the same team.
Thanks, Donna.
Thank you.
And I'll, I'll say, I think I answered this the same way in the first interview or similar, but uh, I like it when things are done well. I like it when things are done transparently and open. Those, those two factors are, I don't expect perfection. Let me just clarify about, well, I I think that Dexter's come a long way. And we've been continuously been moving forward and we're going to continue to go forward. And we need a, we need our next manager to just keep that, that momentum and keep that eye looking forward. We can, we can learn from the past. Don't forget what you've learned, but apply it and I'd like, I'd like a year from now to be comfortable that the the person we selected has overcome those initial hurdles, gotten assimilated with the team, to use your word, and is looking forward. Um, so.
Great to hear.
I realize that that takes a little bit of time too, you know, that uh, team building is a, is something that's done over time and it's reinforced. I think your your resume speaks for that probably, what you, what you talked about speaks to that too, so.
Yeah, thank you very much for that.
Yeah. Um, does Alex, I should ask, do you have any questions? I didn't mean to skip over.
No, I don't need you.
Okay. Does anybody have any closing comments or questions that they thought of?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just looking at the transition between different uh, jobs. It's like, you know, you've been in positions for, you know, probably less than five years each maybe. Um, you kind of spoke to this when you talked about maybe you finishing out your career here. Can you talk about why you left previous positions and I guess if you need to repeat, if you, if you think you would be moving on, at some point, if you'd see yourself staying here?
I see myself staying here permanently. Uh, I love Dexter. In the back of my mind, I've always wanted to move here after, you know, my kids were through the schools because I don't want to change them out of their schools they're in. The other part of it is, is that Dexter is um, small enough to have that community, that team feel so that you're, you know, this team that you're talking about, that's, you know, it's really treasured. I can see that. And that's something that I want to be a part of too, that I want to have, want to be able to sit and talk and say, hey, 15 years ago, remember when we bought the building that, you know, Town Hall is, you know, that we have, you know, the city buildings in right now? And talk about the processes we went through and not learning it from other people, but knowing it. And so that's a professional goal of mine is that I want to be able to be in a position where I can make long lasting changes and and ensuring move forward. And Dexter is like this perfect gem because you're small enough to have that community feel, but you're growing and you're big enough to have things that are changing. And because I love to be learning and growing and changing and moving forward. Um, and so I think that that's why Dexter is so appealing to me. Thank you.
Great question.
I have less great questions. Uh, you you mentioned growing up in a small town. What small town was that?
Uh, do you know Perry in Michigan?
Where?
Perry. Okay, and I grew up on the, uh, in the country, so uh, we didn't have a working farm. But my aunt and uncle had the second largest dairy farm in Michigan, so we spent every weekend out there. And uh, it's hard work and, you know, I come from a very hardworking family and I, I think it's healthy to work hard. And I love it. I love my job. I love what I do. Kind of not really worked for me.
One, one last, not as good question. In 97, were you in Spartan Stadium when Charles Woodson went up a 20 foot ladder and got the one handed catch?
Unfortunately, sports are my weakness. I was, I worked my way through college and I was probably working during the game, um, unfortunately. Let's just say yes, I would have been in a sport at that time, so we'll say yes.
Yeah, I saw that. I was um, in the end zone in the Michigan marching band. I saw it. It was wild.
Now, that's pretty awesome. I have grown, I've grown up on this for football since I graduated, so. But back then I was all business and work.
Well, it's important to have a little fun in there too.
That's right, that's right.
Well, thank you for your participation in this process today. Um, you've been very open and appreciate you coming in.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me. Um, I really hope that you find the right fit to go forward. And, you know, wish you the best of luck if I don't have the chance to meet with you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, I appreciate it too. You want me to go ahead and?
Yeah, so that concludes that. We do, we, I will say, we will offer the non arranged participation. We do have a few people online have joined us. Is there any non, non arranged participation? I don't. Okay, I don't see any either. So we, we are essentially adjourned from our workshop. Thank you, everybody, that you just created today. I think we did well. Great. Thanks for all everything you did to get this set up, organized, um, even through the little technology glitch, we, we grew together there. We grew, we learned something and we, so.
Very nice meeting you.
Donna, thanks.